Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tonight we have the Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session of May 8th, 2017. Welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda tonight is vertical mixed use regarding the development moratorium. We have presenting Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development Manager. We had this topic before Land and Shore last Thursday, so some of it, just for three of us, will be somewhat of a repeat.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. And so, as mentioned, we're here to talk about the vertical mixed use portion of the development moratorium. There was also a staff memo that provided a little bit of additional information. It is not a case study, as last Thursday at Land and Shore, there was a suggestion that we look at a case study of some of the cities that we see some successful vertical mixed use being happening. But what I did was summarize some of the interview data, interview quotes that we did with the various cities, just to kind of give you an idea. So if there is an interest in doing a little bit more research, we can definitely do that. But wanted to give you some additional background that we already had that was easy to get for this meeting on Monday. So as you probably remember me mentioning several times that the, this project has started in 2016. There was a funding allocation that occurred in early, I guess it was in the first quarter of last year. And basically, these are the product, project motivations that spurred our work on for the vertical mixed use. And we have been, we hired Eco Northwest to do a data analysis. We developed some recommendations. We heard some alternatives to consider. But basically, the findings from the report stated that the market at this point does not support vertical mixed use on its own. And we looked at exploring incentives and/or other regulations to move the market. And before we go further into those details, we wanted to confirm the question we wanted, that we're addressing here, because I think in Land and Shore, we had a little bit of a conversation about whether vertical mixed use itself is a tool for getting vibrancy in the central Issaquah area. And we don't agree that this is, this one piece alone does that. Obviously, there's other things that are currently in the, in the central Issaquah plan and the development standards, and are also being worked on through the other portions of the moratorium. But I guess, one of the questions that was asked in the initial study was, why are we not getting vertical mixed use? And so, again, we did the Eco Northwest analysis and showed you lots of data and graphs. And so, that's basically, you know, done, completed question. Do we want to continue to explore, how can we make it happen? If we, if we do, then we have some, we continue this conversation. If we believe that vertical mixed use isn't the vehicle to make the vibrancy that we want to see happen in the, in the central Issaquah plan, then we can step back and even maybe put it on pause, and then look as the other items move forward, and then decide if there's something more that we want to do with that. So initially, before we dive into the details, asking if this is something that we want to continue the conversation tonight.
So Jen, can I ask you to take one, take just one step backward?
Sure.
And maybe tell us what we are trying to accomplish tonight, so we know where we're headed tonight, just beyond this question.
So beyond, so if, if we decide that we don't want to continue conversation, then, then our, we're basically done, or putting the conversation on pause. If we are going to continue the conversation, our schedule has us completing this work in September of, so meaning whether we look at regulations or any other code amendments, we would be looking at moving this forward from here to PPC in June and July, and then Land and Shore, and then full council adoption in September. So we would have to, from this meeting here, have some clear input on the alternatives that we will, we can talk about, what pieces you want us to pursue further. Is that not clear?
Yeah, I'm a little bit not, I'm a little unclear when you say, we decide we don't want to pursue this question, we put it on pause. Which question, the second?
Yes. How can we make it happen?
The facilitation of mixed use.
Exactly.
The two different questions being, one is, how do we get what we want? And the second one is, do we want to try to make it happen faster in a market where we might not be getting it? Is that?
Well, I think part of the conversation, again, was that maybe vertical mixed use isn't the, the tool to get what we want exactly. So what is it that we want? I mean, that's a bigger conversation. But the vision of the central Issaquah plan may or may not hinge on us getting vertical mixed use, per se. If, if the conversation evolves that maybe this isn't the right tool, the other things we're looking at, like the architectural design, like the parking, trying to get more structured parking versus surface parking lots, if those are better tools, you feel, to achieve what you want in the central Issaquah plan, then we don't, we don't have to force this top, continue to force this conversation again, if it's not at the place where, it's not a viable solution.
Okay.
But we do have, we do have ideas to talk about, if we do want to talk about that.
Mary Lou?
Just a question about what a pause means. Does a, does a pause mean that we would then say that that was our action to relieve ourselves from the moratorium is to not change anything?
Okay. Yeah. And again, some of the things that are coming forward, the architectural review and the parking may inform, you know, you don't have that information now to know exactly what that's going to be. So you may feel more comfortable, once you see those things, that they are going to address your concerns or your desires to have the central Issaquah plan be all that it can be.
Questions about what we, Tola?
So I guess one of the questions around this would be, seems to me that the central Issaquah plan has vertical mixed use for, for vertical mixed use sake. In other words, that is part of, as you look at the vision that's outlined in the central Issaquah plan, vertical mixed use is specifically called out as one of the goals.
I'm not sure if it's vertical, but it says mixed use, and you see images of vertical mixed use, yes.
Right. So I guess it comes back to sort of a philosophical question on, you know, this moratorium, to my way of thinking, is because we're not seeing the development in the valley that was what we defined that we wanted, as measured by the central Issaquah plan. So if we have something that is sort of definitional in the central Issaquah plan, I would want to be really careful about saying, yeah, that's not what we want, because that work represented such a large effort by such a broad constituency in the community. Not that we can't, if we thought that it was, it just is a higher hurdle to cross, right? It isn't that we can't do it. It's just, it's different to me than saying, we're not getting what we want, you know, we're not getting our goal as, as measured in the central Issaquah plan. That's very different than saying, the central Issaquah plan, you know, is maybe wrong, right? That, to me, requires a much higher burden of proof than whether or not we're getting what's in the central Issaquah plan.
Yeah, I understand the question to be that we're considering the topic, and the possibility of taking some type of legislative action through some incentive, or land use designation, or something, or at least through policy, to try to encourage vertical mixed use. So it's not a question of do we want it or not, it's whether or not we take extraordinary action to encourage it. And I think I heard the question was, and I think this was the conversation we had at Land and Shore, do we have the right, do we have enough information to make a decision on any extra steps? So I don't think the conversation was ever, is vertical mixed use good or right for the central area? It's, it's what action do we take, if any, to try to encourage it? And that's what I understand this conversation to be about, because you're, like you say, you laid out a couple sessions with PPC, and then, then creating the legislative item for us to take action on, so.
Yeah, it could be encourage or require, right? It's either way. Whatever word you'd like. Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Tola?
That's a good point.
Well, then now I'm super confused, because I thought just a minute ago, we said there were two questions. The first question is, is vertical mixed use something we want in and of itself? Is it a goal to be strived towards? And the second question was, if the answer is yes, do, what do we, what if anything, do we want to do? And I understand the second, I understand the second question much better than the first. But the first, it seems pretty clear that that's what was said about four minutes ago.
So it's my understanding that the second, so forget about the second question, that the first, the first question was the one that was contemplated under the moratorium. That's the one that was contemplated. We had a report card, and it showed that we envisioned mixed use in the central Issaquah plan, and we were not getting it. And so, we were, you know, adding that to the list of reasons that we needed a pause. And then, I think what happened is, as a result of heading down the path of trying to figure out what will help us get mixed use, which we're now kind of looking at vertical mixed use, in the central Issaquah plan, I think there may have been some sort of an understanding by some people that this is what we wanted, that we wanted to then also figure out how we wanted to make it happen, or force it, force it to happen. And therefore, one of the considerations is, how do you facilitate it? So what kind of incentives? And so, I think what Jen is trying-
Or code, required, be code, no incentive, require. Incentor or require?
Yes. And so, I think what Jen is trying to say is that if we, so then say what you were saying about a pause. Well, then the thing came out in Land and Shore, another discussion was about vibrancy, and whether or not, if that's what we're trying to achieve with mixed use, or vertical mixed use, that's a whole separate question that we haven't talked about. And so, are we potentially headed down a path where we're trying to get, we think we're getting something with mixed use or vertical mixed use, that we still might not? So let's say we have this fantastic plan, and we're told by everybody in the world, you are going to get mixed use, because you've required it everywhere. And all of a sudden, we get all this mixed use, and 30 years later, we don't have the vibe, we also don't have the vibrancy that we envisioned. So that's what Jen's talking about. So are we, so what's, what are we trying to achieve by answering questions about mixed use? Is it really that we just want mixed use? Or is that we are trying to achieve something that results from mixed use, which is that word vibrancy that she talked about? So I mean, obviously, we didn't work on this presentation together, or it would be clear. And we certainly don't always do that. But that's my understanding, and Paul and Mary Lou at Land and Shore, and so if I'm misrepresenting anything, then, so I think that's kind of where we're, we had quite a long discussion.
Right. And so Thursday night, this comes from Thursday night to tonight, right? So we added this, this slide, to again, kind of make sure that we're all on the same page. Is this, is this a discussion you want to continue? Or, again, the initial question was, why are we not getting it? So now we know, and then is it the next step of, should we do something about that? So regulations, incentives, whatever it may be.
Right. And the, and the very simple answer to the why are we not, is because, I think there's two of them. One is, it's market-driven, and the market isn't right. And two is, it's not required. And so, if it's more expensive to build, you can't expect that somebody's going to build something that's more expensive, expensive to build, if the market isn't right, or the incentives aren't, incentives aren't there. So that's the answer to the first question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so I think now, you had some things that you were going to show us to get us thinking, and all those things of vibrancy and so forth, and then we could discuss this with more information, I think.
So what we, if we continue with this conversation, we'll look at the, the recommendations for the vertical mixed use piece of that. So the vibrancy, I think, is a bigger question, right? And unfortunately, this was a, I don't know, maybe an hour conversation at Land and Shore, where, or maybe half an hour, it was late.
An hour.
About, you know, how we, how we get vibrancy, and we, you know, we talked about, there are things that are in the central Issaquah plan and the development standards that will, you know, bringing the building up to the sidewalk, and, you know, encouraging more of that public plaza type of things, that will, you know, are there in the plan already to create, to encourage the vibrancy. And so, it was just trying to feel like the, the choices may not feel like we're definitely going to get that vibrancy we envisioned in the central Issaquah plan by implementing this. And so, that's kind of where we wanted to go back.
A question for Jen. So did you want to hear from each of us, then? Is that why the questions are up here? We, we talk about where we are on the spectrum of, do we need it? Is that what you're asking us?
If, if you want to continue this conversation, we can, we can just go into the conversation and look at the op, the recommendation and the options, and then we can talk about that.
I actually don't think it's bad to take the temperature and see where everybody is.
So if people are-
I'll start, if you want.
Okay.
So actually, I thought it was a pretty good conversation at Land and Shore. Just putting in vertical mixed use doesn't mean you create a wonderful new neighborhood. There's a lot more to it than that. But on, on the scale of how important is it, I think it's really important. I think we have to have something in there, and I'll listen to the incentives before I decide on it. But I think we need to require it, or incent it, to get it. Because I don't think if we constructed a series of office buildings and apartment buildings that did not have anything different on the first floor, and you, I don't think that creates a whole lot of anything. So I want to see the rest of the presentation and understand. To me, I think mixed use is a component that contributes to the picture of building that vibrant neighborhood. It is not the most important thing, but it is not the least important thing. So I want something. That's sort of where my head is.
Meal? Bria?
So I would agree. I, I just, with where we're at right now, we're, I feel like we're kind of starting with the question at the beginning, and I would love to go through and talk a little bit more about it. So I don't feel like I'm standing like a fourth of the way down the path, and, you know, can't really see into the, into the future. But just overall, I think vertical mixed use and mixed use is important, so I'd like to know what some of the options are, and understand a little bit more.
Tola?
So I want to get into this more as well. I see on one of the slides that it says, strong multifamily rents and lower costs needed to support VMU. Well, we have some of the highest rents in the entire Seattle area. We have like, we're fifth in all of Seattle, there's, or in all of the King County area. And we have, I believe, still quite low costs in terms of per square foot for buying real estate compared to those other high-end neighborhoods like Ballard and Capitol Hill and places like that. So it seems to me like vertical mixed use would be, by those criteria, we'd be a good candidate for it. And I agree that, I think co-locating residential and commercial, and where, sorry, residential and retail, and where we can, commercial, is, is really good, and is going to be an essential part of reducing, or maybe reducing isn't the right word, but managing traffic as this region continues to grow. So it's a big deal to me.
Eileen?
You know, I agree that that mixed use is important, but as I was reading through this and, and really thought about it, it almost felt like it was being forced. And being forced is not necessarily going to make people come to it and want to be participating and buy into it until, until we're ready, until the town is ready, until the, it's, you know. So I would like to continue with this, just because I need to understand it a little bit better. But, you know, it's, I'm just concerned as to whether we are truly ready for this at this moment.
So when you say, ready for, for what?
Now, we can put, we can put forth this document, but are people going to come in and want to follow through with what this project is? You know, it, so if we're going to be mixed use with, you know, commercial on the bottom, and apartments and residents on the top, are we ready for that? Is there the drive and the desire for this at this moment? Or is it going to take a few more years before, or more than maybe a few more years, before this is actually a process or a type of, of living people would want? And are they going to come? We can build it, but are they going to come?
Anybody else?
The central area plan is very aspirational. I think it's, it's a vision to create an area within town that doesn't exist today, but would hopefully capture what a more dense urban-like environment should be, or what we'd like, what we would like to see. And, and we've done much with, with, with code, with land use, with design and development standards, to, to try to bring this about. So I want to make sure we use, we keep all of our tools available to us. Some, and it's probably, my sense is, there'll be a collection, effect of a collection of tools, like Jen's mentioned a couple times already, that we're trying to, that we're considering, such as parking, such as the urban design. And so, I like to keep it on the table. I think what I learned last Thursday was that there is no clear-cut, single strategy that we can use to, to get what we're, what we hope for. And that the, but, but just leaving it, doing nothing, is certainly an option, and it's the collective sense of this body that we should, we should do nothing. But I'm going into this thinking, looking for a way of doing something so that we do try to control our own destiny to the extent that it's reasonable. The market's going to do what the market's going to do, and we have some opportunity to influence that, but we have to be prudent in whatever choice we want. I do see mixed use as part of the vision we're trying to achieve, so I want to keep that tool available to us.
Yeah, and I guess, from the information we've gotten from, you know, previously, that basically the rents won't support it, and we have to increase rents, which to me is totally contradictory to what we're trying to do. So if we've put in a plan that says, yes, let's increase rents, you know, 20, 30 percent, so now we can have a vertical mixed use, it just, I'm having a hard problem with that dichotomy, which is, you know, the biggest thing I'm looking at right now. I think I want to, you know, look at it, get some more, we're going to have to decide, I think we do have to decide what we want to do and how we want to get it. And sometimes those are, those are tough, and maybe if it's not ready now, it may be in five or 10 years. If we put in, you know, zoning, it's, it's not a one-year zoning, it's a, you know, it's a longer term than that. So we have to look at that for the long term, and, and just got to, you know, have to go through it, and some, I think we have to make some tough decisions. But I am concerned with, with getting what we want out of this. It's the reason why we're doing all this work, right?
So I will repeat a little bit what I said on Land, at Land and Shore, and that's what that, we seem to be struggling a little bit with what to do regarding this mixed use, vertical mixed use question. And for me, I'm just not concerned about it. I think it is really, really critical that we figure out now how it is that we, that we are going to ensure that the, the vision that we have in the central Issaquah plan is realized. Not, let's hope we get it, not, let's hope we have some really super extra, you know, generous developers, people who own property, who want to, who enjoy and like and appreciate the vision of it. But we have to, we have to make sure that what comes along is exactly what we want. And if you go back, when I go back to the year the central Issaquah plan was, was adopted, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that I was concerned about mixed use. And I was told by the, we got our first project, which was not mixed use. We were told, we were, we asked, could we please have mixed use in your project? No, if you wanted it, you should have required it. We didn't get it. We haven't gotten any. Part of what we were told about the central Issaquah plan is that we could, and I'll use the phrase that was used, turn on a dime and correct the plan, if we were not getting what we envisioned. That was several years ago. And the reason that we have a moratorium is because, in many ways, we are not getting what we envisioned. So I am very, very concerned that we are at a point right now, that we are going to have a decision to make, a very important decision, about what plan we put in place, what codes, what we put in place, that are going to guarantee that we get what we envision. So what I said on Land and Shore was that I think that we're at a point when we need to seriously consider hiring a consultant that does this type of planning for a living, that's their expertise. Because what I've also been told is, we don't have the expertise inside the city to do this kind of planning. And that has, I'll say it again, because Jen's up there, I'm very sensitive to the fact that we have real people standing up here, and it has nothing to do with the people. This is specialized planning, it's very, very complex, and I'm very uncomfortable sitting here, seven, seven of us, whose, I don't believe any of us have the expertise to have this kind of planning. And what we were asked at Land and Shore was, well, what do you think about this, and what do you think about that? And quite frankly, I don't know. And if the question is, and I think it's a really, really, really good question that came out, is, if we're trying to achieve something beyond just, you know, vertical mixed use buildings to create some kind of vibrancy, I have no idea how to do that. And I'm really uncomfortable making a decision of that magnitude at this juncture. So I'm hoping at some point tonight, I think Jen is willing to talk about the information that she got from a consultant that's already helping one of the elements for the central Issaquah plan, to see what it would cost to retain a consultant to actually get where we wanted to go, and where we said we wanted to go, three and a half, four years ago. So that's where I'm at.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. We will definitely, we're moving forward. That's great. And as you have mentioned, this is a really challenging thing, because it is a long-term vision. And again, one of the reasons we started on this, on this path was because things are happening now that are setting things in place for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and we want to make sure that we don't lose our opportunities. And this isn't something the city's going to be doing, right? We're not, at this point, buying land and building everything in the commercial areas of Issaquah. So we have to do things that are going to make sense for the market to get what we want. So I will run through briefly the, so again, this was the study that was done by Eco Northwest, so we did hire a consultant in the beginning, because one of the things, as Councilmember Goodman mentioned, is, we didn't know, like, why aren't we getting this? So we really wanted to look at the data. And, and so these are the questions that we proposed to them, is what, you know, what are the market conditions supporting mixed use? Does, are markets currently supported, and if, why or why not? And then what are the policy trade-offs and considerations if we do, if we do regulations and/or incentives? So in general, the findings talk about that, again, a vertical mixed use project, what we're talking about is more of the commercial on the ground floor and residential above, is really a residential project when you look at it in the financial terms, because most of your rent's coming from that. And your, so your multifamily rents need to be higher. There's higher construction costs because of the type of construction, and the type of parking also, because there's different parking needs for each of those uses. I mean, anytime you add another use, you add a more complexity of the type of parking, and it's always a great, a great way to think you can share parking, but it doesn't always work all the time. And so, one of the things that is actually in the memo, is one of the things that talks about that, the, the things that are needed for success are the density of an area, and what's in the memo just talks, gives a comparison of one mile and a three-mile radius of the different communities that we've, we've mentioned over this conversation, Kirkland, Redmond, Bothell's doing a lot around mixed, mixed use as well as Linwood, where we may not always compare ourselves to them, but they have gone through these processes. And even Seattle has had struggles over the, you know, 20 years to figure out how to do this right. So the density is really important, and as we know, in our central Issaquah plant, our area, rather, we do not have residents living right there. And what, when we are building these vertical mixed use buildings, the, the retail or commercial spaces on the bottom tend to be neighborhood-serving, so we need to have people that are in the area, you know, I may not drive from Renton- the area, you know, I may not drive from Renton to go to that nail shop, or that restaurant, or that insurance agent, but really, you need to have a density in that area, whether it's through employees and/or, and/or residents. So, that's one of the things that you can see in that, in that memo, that provides you a little bit more information of the data. And then, again, talking to our peer cities and some other developers, it needs to be market-driven, and so, supported, because you can, you can hope for it, but it's, unless it actually pencils out, they're not going to build it as was mentioned. One of the things that we really also heard about is the size of our Central Issaquah Plan area, and they say, well, where's the there? Where do you want this? We go, I'm not quite sure, right? And we, we did some additional research, which we'll talk about tonight, but in all the other cities, they have been very focused about where they want. In Kirkland, it's in their downtown, so they already, they have established downtown. In Redmond, they, they have made investments around the Cleveland Street, where they built a park, they built parking to allow for this transitional nature of, of the redevelopment, and have a six-block area. In Bothell, again, they have this focused area where they want it, and then, as that gets full, they'll continue to grow and meet their vision. So that's something to think about. Whatever we decide today doesn't mean it has to only be there, doesn't mean that it will preclude it from anyplace else. Again, this could be in for the next five years, and we could decide, okay, our next node, our next opportunity, you know, as sound transit planning gets farther along, or other things happen, new business moves to town, we may be able to see opportunities at further locations. And then, cities have done things, again, who made investments and done other things to encourage it to happen.
Question?
Yeah.
Don't, don't we have, in the Central Issaquah Plan, we have sort of the, I think it is the nine flavors, or whatever it is, the subregions within?
We have 10 districts, yes.
And.
Neighborhoods.
And.
Neighborhoods, no.
Some of those specifically talk about mixed use, right? And some of them do not.
Most of them, yeah.
Is it most?
Um, yeah.
There's, I know there's a bunch that.
Yeah. So I think, well, of course, the service area doesn't talk about that, I'm sorry, not the, yeah, service area, yes, I'm thinking about zoning now. And I don't know if, oh, I'm sorry?
Old Ten.
Old Ten, that was the other one, so, so basically, we're Booms and, and Triple X. But, I think in most other ones, it's mentioned mixed use.
But Gateway did.
Yeah, so it wasn't, we weren't able to.
It's not a differentiator, okay.
Yeah. But one of the districts, Gateway, won't have it at all, and it talked about it.
It did talk about it, yes.
So one of the questions we haven't really put into this discussion is, we currently have retail, not where Gateway is, but where some of our other new developments are, and if we just get single-use, either commercial or residential, we're actually displacing retail, because it's currently there. For example, Atlas displaced retail. So that's something we need to actually make part of our conversations.
Right. And retail, and that's a whole nother conversation about how retail is changing as a market, and how, what's the new force for that, so. Any other questions before we move on? So, we developed five different recommendation options everywhere, everywhere from, and we'll go through these, piece by piece, and have some pros and cons we've developed. They are not, this does not mean you have to pick one, or two, or three, but, and actually, our thoughts, as, as we've progressed in this conversation, has been that we believe that number two and three might be a good approach, but we can look at, all, we want to look at all of these and determine what, what sits well to what you believe you want to happen. So, we'll go through these five options, from requiring mixed use in the entire urban core, to doing nothing, which, we heard tonight, that may not be what we want, but that is definitely an option. So, again, so the coral reddish areas are, is our urban core by zoning, so, again, so this is actually a portion of three different districts, I believe, yes, maybe even four? So, you, it's about 248 developable acres, that's taking out I-90 and the other right-of-way that exists within there. So obviously, if you require it, you're going to have a lot of ground floor built, and maybe more than we actually, our market could support. And, if you require it in this area only, it may encourage development to happen outside the, in other areas, and what we've seen so far is, the redevelopment that's happened hasn't been by the, the current property owner, but it's somebody buying, looking for that opportunity to redevelop, and so, when they would, you know, do the, do the math, they may say, okay, now let's go into these other areas where it's not required and build. And, and again, we don't think this offers us the focus, the, or the multiple FOKI to make, make use successful. Any thoughts, questions about this? Pretty clear? Okay. So, our second one was to look at it more, more geographic area, and we actually had conversations back when our Councilmember Mariah Batiste was on our Economic Vitality Commission about where that should be, and we, and we can go into more details, but we created some criteria, looking around, making sure it's in the zoning area that has the highest density, looking at the street classification, so basically, you're building streets that allow that, or the future streets will be allowed for that more vibrance, big sidewalks, nice feel to be on the, walking along there, and we looked at the current, current amenities as well. And so, this idea is not, we're not recommending it right here, these places, but the idea is that either you could provide, you could look at it, require it in a linear form, so we talked in the past about 12th and Maple, and, or you could look at it in node sections, so looking at intersections. So, for instance, the 12th and Maple one, you know, you look at the major intersections, so currently Gilman, looking at, you know, where Mall will eventually reconnect to 7th through that shopping center, and at Maple, and our Newport. Again, not, we would not recommend all of these locations, but we're just giving you an idea of what it could look like, if you say, okay, we want to require it in this area. Of course, each of these circles and lines have their pros and cons, and we can go through those, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions on any of the alternatives, or do you want to ask questions later and have them bring them back? What makes more sense? Well, does anybody have any questions? I mean, I have a question, but I can wait. Want to get all the way through it?
Yes, go ahead.
We'll go all the way through.
Okay, all right. Um, yeah, and if something, if something doesn't make sense, though, please ask, stop, me and ask. So, and, you know, obviously, requiring it in a geographic area allows us to have that focus, the FOKI multiple could be. In the 12th and Maple area, again, we discussed this in a previous work session, there were some concerns, so the, the area in this, within this FOKI, again, once you require it one place, it could, it could actually shift it outside of wherever you require it, so that's, that still stands. And then, there is quite a few properties within this area that are either redeveloped or ready, so we have a newer hotel, we have a two-story off, two or three-story office building that's relatively new, that we don't envision being redeveloped anytime soon, and then also, development agreement that the Raleigh Properties has, and so, anything we do does not change their development requirements. So of course, they could choose to provide mix, vertical mixed use, but it's not going to, if we require it, it's not going to be required for that, those properties. It was suggested to look at Gilman, and, again, it helps to achieve the city's focus, providing a focus for our vision. As you may know, we're starting to work on a Gilman corridor vis, plan, and, one of the things we've been looking, we've already recognized, is that there are some impediments to building to the street along Gilman currently, that are going to be a little challenging to figure out, and, including a stream that's in front of the Commons and partial town and country. There's an easement for the metro sewer line on the north, and, on the north side of Gilman in that area as well. So, obviously, those things, anything can be fixed with money, but there, you know, there may be some additional costs to make, to get that, the buildings to the street frontage. We are working on those road standards, because they are currently not defined in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, so that's something that won't be completed until 2018, and then again, part of this, on the, on the eastern, or western edge, sorry, has some properties owned by Raleigh, properties that is under development agreement, so it wouldn't impact that. There has also been talk of, you know, this area or across the highway, the potential light rail placement, and so, where that station will be, is a benefit if we knew what that was, but we don't know that at this point. Any thoughts or questions before I move on to this, this general topic about defining an area, and creating, again, a node, nodes, linear requirement?
What is the next part of your presentation?
So this is the second, second recommendation, so then.
Okay.
Yeah. So the third recommendation is to look at, look at this approach as a pioneer project. So, pioneer projects were mentioned in the Central Issaquah Plan, but they were not, any of the, the details were not carried forward to the Development and Design Standards, and so, at that time, the market was in a downturn, and they had a concern that there would not be residential built within the Central Issaquah area, so we can kind of laugh about that now, but, so, a lot of the, the recommendations are based around residential, but we could look at that for requiring it around vertical mixed use. And so what we would do, what we call this, a mini-development agreement, and typically, you know, we do a lot of development agreements here, and we've been really successful at helping to achieve our city vision, and making it a win-win for our property and our business owners. Typically, development agreements are for larger parcels that want some certainty over time, so they're going to develop in phases. I know that, just recently, you approved the Three Trails Development Agreement, but there was, the benefit for them was to move forward during the moratorium, so there has to be a benefit for somebody to move, to want to come to the city and talk about providing something extra. And so, by what we hoped for this recommendation, this, we'd be able to do is actually say, we have this tool, this has been passed for, it's in our, it's on our code, and we can work with you to actually provide you additional, you know, some additional benefit for our public benefit. And so, the idea that, again, that we can't just rely on developers' good nature to do what we want, if they know we have this tool, we're, we're able to, one, market and talk about it, but also, they, as they go through our codes and determine the feasibility for redeveloping the property, they will consider what, what could, what else could we, if, if we have criteria, and, you know, these are the things we want, we want vertical mixed use, we want a completion of the green necklace, those type of things, then they could say, okay, we want to, we, we'll be willing to provide this if we can have some extra density, or we, whatever they may be. And those are the details that you get into the negotiation that makes sense for that site. So it actually allows you to, again, get a win-win for the city, so help us get a little closer to our vision for this, for the, the Central Issaquah Plan. But the cons could be that it's not the right project, right? It's somebody who just happens to be, come in and say, we want to do this. So we have to be really clear about what our criteria are, and when you feel comfortable for us to, to spend the time, and the, you know, the staff resources and your time to review that. Number four is to, is the deterring non-vertical mixed use, and this is something, again, I think we presented in the past. So that would be something such as requiring multi-story or structured parking, so to get away from the single-story suburban-style, big parking lot development. And so that would, you'd get a more efficient use of your land, but you may not get vertical mixed use, you may not get that vibrancy. And depending on how much requirements you put on, you may delay investment in the, in the area. And then, oh, do nothing was taken out, so.
So, Stacey, we went through all of the options, and we did not ask questions, so we have not gone back and walked through them yet.
Okay. You want to do that? Okay. Start at number one, and ask questions, and tell us.
Ask a high-level question?
Yes.
Which is, and I always hate to ask this question, but I will anyhow, do we know how Kirkland and Redmond did it? Which of these options they used, if, if one of these?
So Kirkland does require it in their downtown area, they do not have any incentives. Redmond does require it in that six-block area, and so they provided, again, they, they made investments in the downtown park, and that parking lot and such, and they do have, they're, they're exploring multifamily tax exemption now, but they don't have that, they didn't have that currently.
Which is an incentive.
Yes.
So they both just said, you have to have it?
Within a small.
Kirkland in a larger area, Redmond in a smaller area.
Yeah. Kirkland, Kirkland's at about a 10, 11 block, and Kirkland is, actually, they have also looked at a smaller area for it being restaurant-retail, very intense vibrant type of uses, and then as you go out, the commercial is allowed to be more of the office and some other uses. And so that's another thing, when you talk about, if we, if we look at requiring it, what, what the end use is, we're not looking, we're not exploring that, or regulating that, so.
Really? Are there any jurisdictions that have taken an area this large, hundreds and hundreds of acres, and required it?
Not that we've been. I mean, again, Bothell, which has done a major reinvestment in their downtown, has, has a phased approach, so right now, they're requiring it in their more, you know, core, and then they do envision as time goes on, but not many, not one year, two years, but 10, 20 years, that, that would continue to grow in the nodes, but, yeah. If somebody knows that, that example, that would be great, but not, we found.
Did you want comments on these as we go as well?
Sure, if you want.
Okay, not in favor of number one? It doesn't seem to make any sense. I mean, it's an option, but it seems silly.
Yeah.
And I'd just say, take it off the table.
Mariah?
I would agree, I, I just, I, the area is so large, and if, if we don't have the market support to look at that, it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Okay, okay, easy.
One question.
Oh, yes.
So, how does the, just as more of a curiosity, Costco DA? I mean, that's, that wouldn't be, that's not really on the table in that location either, is it? Any more than the rally?
Exactly, exactly.
We haven't been calling that out.
That would be called, yeah, that would also eliminate the area basically around the, the pond, right? But that also, but the urban core also includes, like where IHOP and the other buildings are across from State Park, yep. So on the north side, there would be a lot taken out by the development agreement, and the, actually, the covenants that exist currently during the Pickering Place, that does not allow residential this time. Okay, so we are eliminating that, for what I sense? Okay. The idea to look at geography.
So, we heard from a couple people.
Okay, sorry. I saw shaking heads, sorry.
So, Jen's understanding is that the council wants to eliminate that option?
Okay, thank you.
Just some questions on this one?
Sure.
So this is sort of a revision of the first presentation, which came through, more or less, talking about streets. The second one is, we have some streets, and we have some nodes on some streets, and so, this being a, maybe a third touch for three people on Land and Shore, what jumped out at me is that the streets that were selected, Maple and 12th and Gilman, are large, wide streets, and going through some of the other cities that are doing this, it seems to me that they're actually picking to put it on the smaller pedestrian streets, and maybe having a wraparound to a corner that's a major street. And so, in that case, it would actually be required on the mid-blocks, not so much the main streets, and so, I didn't know if that was something that we could do or consider, and what your thoughts on were, what that, about that idea?
No, you're right, I think, one of the, I think the responses when we were looking at, even just on Gilman, is that, where would you really want to sit on the, on the cafe? You're probably looking at wanting to sit on the, around the corner, like you said. So, there are some core streets that are required to be built in, indefinitely in the 12th and Maple area, and so actually, that Northwest Mall is one of those streets that we'll come across, but some core streets going more north and south. So again, now you get to the, on the north side, those are all Raleigh Development Agreement streets, so if you put that circle there, you're less likely to have that.
Yes, so, a couple of questions on that, and one was that, some of the nodes that we're showing now, such as Gilman and 12th, and Maple and 12th, already have two corners that wouldn't even, wouldn't even meet the, they're, they're not locations for it. One is a church and a playfield, and the other is the hotel and the office building, and so, they're kind of wiped out right away. But Gilman, to me, was a totally different animal. We had a conversation, I think when we were, I think it was when we were doing the development agreement or cost-sharing agreement for Gilman Lofts, about what Gilman would look like on the north side in terms of breaking it up, and I, I think the quick answer I heard was, there is no plan to break up into smaller blocks on the north side of Gilman, and it is an awkward right-of-way in that there may be, it's very big, and there may be a lot of space on the north side, and I haven't gone back to look at what the task force said, but I thought at one point, there was discussion about a promenade, or a stroll, or something like that, and I'm wondering if that was in that wider right-of-way, on the north side of Gilman, and would be that kind of separation where you could have retail, set a little bit further back, but with a large, you know, linear park, or whatever you want to call it. I just, I get concerned with the nodes at major intersections, thinking, well, that, I'm, that's not very pedestrian-friendly, to have to cross four lanes or five lanes. It seemed to me, on, south of Gilman, maybe it should be considered on the interior blocks, with a wraparound a corner onto a main street, and north of Gilman, it might be all facing Gilman, but on the other side of a promenade, that would make it a pedestrian-friendly place, and a pedestrian-friendly environment. So, just wanted to get your thoughts on those two ideas.
And so I should, I should mention, that, you know, the, the nodes we're showing, again, we're not looks, we're recommending all of these, or any of these at this point, so it's the, just to show the idea, and I think, because we haven't, we had, we are the first step of defining what Gilman's going to look like, that it's a little hard to answer that question, right? Because we're going to be going, looking at safety, we're going to be looking at access, and all those things along Gilman, and, and be able to answer, this is the, the promenade, the idea, the linear park idea, or some other idea will be what, you know, we come back and have conversations with the council about Gilman, and so that then would help to define where that could be.
So would the short answer be that if one of the things we wanted to consider was requiring it all along the north side of Gilman, facing south, we would do that, and then we would see what the corridor study said, to see if you get the promenade, or the, or the linear park?
Okay. You know, a lot of times, and I think. You know, a lot of times, and I think the consultants have mentioned this before, that retail relies a lot on traffic, you know? And so having it farther back, for retailers, that's not as enticing of a location. But it doesn't mean it can't be successful.
Question. So it seems like when you talk about options one and options two, there's an obvious thing in between them, right? Option one is like a kerblillion acres. And option two is specific nodes that we know, a lot of which are problematic. But it seems like an intermediate position would be to take a chunk of real estate that's smaller than a kerblillion acres. And so if you had a triangle of like Gilman, Newport, Maple, and 12th, right? You said that, that triangle and everything that touches that triangle, everything that's on those streets adjacent to that triangle, something like that. I don't know if that's the right exact piece of real estate, but something like that. I definitely think you have to go west from the option on the right, that the Gilman with urban core. I have a concern about that because it's so far from both exits 15 and 17 that things that you put together for that just really have to go quite a ways up Gilman in either direction. But if you had a region that was like that triangle that I just named, that's to the west of there, you're a lot closer to exit 15 and the impact on traffic is a lot smaller. So it seemed to me there's an intermediate position between one and two that I'd be interested in.
And I was thinking along those same lines, but I was a little bit larger. And I was just thinking south of 90, that whole chunk. Because hard to split that up in the nodes, but looking at, I know it's still a pretty big chunk. But if you pick little pieces, it seems like, you know, the donut's going to bulge and all sorts of other things are going to happen. Particularly if we know the market's not going to happen for, you know, probably five or 10 years, you know, then it's going to push and we're going to get other stuff outside. So I, you know, if you want to really require it, there's something to look at. And I'm just looking there, I couldn't draw a line. So I'm just kind of thinking in general, south of I-90 is away. So splitting that into, in basically a half and have that all controlled in that area. And that's the area that, to me, would be the core. I mean, that's where you want to jump on, jump off, you should walk around. And I mean, right now, I mean, with the retail and the restaurants and the shopping that is there right now, that's almost workable. You don't live there, but I mean, you have a lot of those amenities right there right now. So that's my thoughts for just right now.
So I, I like the nodes and being able to focus there. I'm not sure about the nodes that are here in terms of, they have some areas that are problematic or might have a development agreement in place, so the multi-use wouldn't be required there. I'm just wondering if there would be an opportunity to take a deeper dive into the areas and be able to define exactly, you know, from experts about exactly what would work and where and be able to kind of define the nodes from that or a large node.
Anybody else? Paul?
I've been looking closely at the information you've provided about Kirkland and Redmond and Bothell. Thank you for including that. If there's a pattern, at least in those areas, where my perception has been, that they've been successful, I think it is, it is, it's required in a certain area. It's not as, not as large as the option one we've already struck. And it's maybe larger than an individual node would be. And also, there seems to, there's, and it seems like there's a multi-pronged strategy behind each of these as well. There's economic development strategy with things like the, you know, the SBDC Business Advisor and certain strategies they did to help small businesses that maybe would occupy these places. So this idea, you know, of a location, which I can visually see because I've been to, I've seen what they've done there, an investment, not only for economic development, but also in infrastructure, in the case of Redmond building a park, for example. And actually, you know, that example, Kirkland making a commitment to their downtown area, which already had certain character. And they said, as it redeveloped, we want to maintain it a certain way. So that takes me to a place where it's, I think, as what was said earlier, that it's, it's maybe not just a node, it's a larger area than a single node. And I think there's, but it's also a very multi-part strategy. We're talking about a location. It seems to me, because all of them also did want to create or maintain some type of character or vibrancy. And we're actually trying to create it where it doesn't exist today. And so I think that's very difficult. So sidewise, size-wise, I'm more in this space, but a little bit larger. Kind of like the street, we had the T Street we had earlier, but we have to really think carefully where that would be. So, and then the last thing I'll say is, I-90 will always divide. It'll never foster the kind of environment I think we're shooting for because of the noise that the highway gives off. So I think there's going to have to be some type of separation from the highway. Can't be too close to that. Maybe the suggestion of, you know, of fronting things a certain way on Gilman is possible. But I think we have to keep that in our minds as well. That I-90 will always interrupt the kind of atmosphere that we're shooting to achieve.
Tola?
Can I add to that? I think that Renton is an area that's done a nice job of building up to their freeway going through. And you see a lot of development, most obviously, the city hall, right there, basically adjacent. And it may well be more expensive because there's sound deadening that probably has to occur. But they do a better job, I think, than most cities in maximizing that space right all the way up to the freeway.
Okay, any other comments for this option? Again, this isn't the exact where, but that, this seems like there's an interest to explore this deeper. Is that true?
Yep.
The Pioneer Project approach.
I just, I just don't, I mean, we have this tool. We can do a development agreement. We just did one for an intersection, so, kind of.
Yeah.
So I don't understand, I mean, we always have this tool, so I don't understand why this is different.
So, and I'm not sure if you heard me mention that. So what's the, I guess, what's the incentive for the business, for the property owner to come to us and say, I'll give you more or something? So what is it that they receive? Typically, development agreements is because it's a longer, bigger parcel and it's a longer timeframe for redevelopment. And then for the one we just did, is because they wanted to move forward during the moratorium, right? Before they were allowed to. So individually, most property owners are redevelopers are going to, you know, do due diligence and make decisions based on what they know, not what could happen, you know? Oh, I've heard that they do a development agreement or know that, you know, that we are open to that. But if we actually had this, you know, specified where you guys feel comfortable versus criteria, the tools, and what the public benefit is defined as, they're more likely to then have that conversation with us. Because they're making decisions sometimes before they even come to us. Because a lot of times when they come to this city, they already have, you know, they're far down the road of doing that analysis. And so if it, if it doesn't make sense for them to do, to do vertical mixed use or, you know, whatever other public benefits we want, they won't, you know, they won't include that and they may not even consider that conversation with us unless they know that's something we do.
So it's not written in there now?
A development agreement in our code or?
There isn't anything, like, we have, we had incentives written in, ways you could get density, you know, more density or?
For, in the standards, the density bonus does exist, but we discovered during the analysis of the data that the density bonus is actually disincentive at this time. The other incentives that were suggested for, in the plan, were not carried forward in the development standards. So that included multifamily tax exemption, included L-clip, which is kind of off the table now. And looking, and it even, again, made suggestions of the number of units or, you know, available, the first number of projects. Those are things that we could do, again, maybe not for residential, but for our mixed-use projects.
So in the code language, is it possible to dangle the MFTE and say it could be considered in a development agreement, but not offered up to anybody outside of a development agreement?
Yeah.
I guess I'm a little confused. When you say Pioneer Project, you're talking about only one?
We could, we need to define that. So it could be one, it could be two, it could, again, you could have it a maximum.
So my question would be is, if we have to write in what we require, which we'd have to do, then you lose that ability to negotiate. Because if we require that, they come in and then they would negotiate something other than what we require. That doesn't work because that's not in the code. So I'm not sure where this is, how you really play this out in actual code.
So I don't know that you would say, we require these. You would have like, these are the things we're looking for. Because every property is different, right? So we wouldn't want, maybe we couldn't fulfill our green necklace. Or maybe the vertical mixed use may not be, the building may not be the best place for this location. But there may be some other parts of the Central Issaquah Plan vision that you want to achieve here. So I think by having criteria first to say, okay, if you meet these things, we're willing to spend the time and look at this. And then you could have a menu of things that we would negotiate. And again, there may be additional things. But part of it is giving them an idea before, giving them an idea of where our boundaries are, right? Or where our boundaries, not geographic, but what type of things we're interested in. For them to then say, okay, I could actually do that. And I want to talk about how I can do that with you. I think at the.
But then they could just go ahead without doing it and do what they want. That, I mean, that's the problem again, because if we put in code one thing and say, we want to negotiate something else, you know, they can just do whatever is existing, they don't have to.
Sure, right. But they wouldn't get the carrot then, right? They wouldn't, so if we're offering a benefit for them, so whether it's more density or whatever it may be, they wouldn't get that if we didn't get the public benefit. So this is not at all a list of what we, you know, researched. But this is things I pulled from the Central Issaquah Plan of things that we, you know, have, it's been mentioned, right? And then again, so these are the kind of things we could say, okay, if on the north side of Gilman, we were not, it's not being broken up as much. Or there's other pieces that we feel now, as things redeveloped, we want to complete the street grid a little bit faster.
Mariah?
Again.
So I was just wondering if there might be a way to do a combination approach? If you had the, the choice of the defined areas or the nodes, and then you had, we had talked about that sometimes that, if it's required in an area, that sometimes then that drives people to other areas. Maybe those nodes could be surrounded by areas where there then could be the mini DA agreements. Does that make sense? So if, to Tola's point, if there were a triangle, then there would be a larger triangle outside of the smaller triangle. It would be required inside the triangle. And then in the larger part around, then that could be specified for DA agreements to encourage, but not completely required. To get more mixed use in that area. I don't know if that makes sense.
Sure.
Before I, before you say anything, so we're, now we're in. And so I think we need to figure out what else we need to accomplish tonight so that we can move on. Not that I want to not let people talk. I just wanted to remind people that we're an hour in and we want to be efficient, so.
Thank you.
Mary Lou?
The other side you just had up, Jen, you had a list of the things that could be part of a mini DA. So eligibility criteria, most of those look like things to me that we actually just want. And so I'm wondering why we would have to lay anything out at all. I feel like when you say that there's room to wiggle on everything, everybody coming in the door is going to ask for DA. So why not say, this is what we want? And then entertain only those people who really come in with something exceptional? Because we have development agreement tool in the toolbox. Rather than open this up, I just think everybody will come in and say, I want to sit down, talk with you for a year about what I could possibly do here because everything's on the table. I don't know, that's sort of where my head is. I don't know that we need to go that far.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this. We have this tool. We can use it anytime we want to. It's in state law. I think we need a high bar. I think we need to require what we want, for the most part. I'm shorthanding up here, but I think we need to require what we want. And if we want a development agreement somewhere, it needs to be for extraordinary projects that are above and beyond what we envisioned, so that we not only get what we want, but we get something extraordinary, not something we want.
And yet, so is that a direction from the full, is there a full council agreement that we shouldn't explore this further or ideas?
Plus one.
Yep.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to, you know, talk about this and think about it since last Thursday. And we evolved a little bit. I agree with a lot of what Stacy said, that it's a tool, it's available to us. But I will say, I'm going to repeat what I said a moment ago as well, is that there is, you know, that's a little bit of an incentive, push-pull. We're trying to work with a given developer. But I think at the same time, there's some of these other strategies, which were broader-based programs to help the developer or especially from the commercial element of their investment, be successful. And I would rather us put our energies into something like that, which we haven't talked yet, than continuing with this one.
Next.
Okay. So, and then this one's just basically to require, and this can be geographic or all of urban core, to require multi-story structure parking. So that, again, gets to the not having the single-story surface parking lot built if we don't do another one of these things that require it. So.
Question. Why, I know it's an underutilization of the land, but why tie the hands of current property owners? We've had at least three properties that I can think of that came in and redid one-story retail. And I know it's not exactly, that's not what the vision holds. But why tie their hands and not let them do that? Why would we do that?
Well, it's similar to requiring vertical mixed use for them to do things. So this, but it's maybe one notch down. Because if we're saying the market's not there to actually get the full vertical mixed use of the commercial space on the bottom, we could say, okay, if we require multi-story and something pencils out or structured parking, it helps, it moves the needle a little bit towards our final goal and vision.
But what if all they can afford is to tear down a Denny's and build a Corner Bakery? They can't do it anymore?
Yeah, well, they wouldn't be able to do that also if we required vertical mixed use, right? So that's, so this is like a lighter version of requiring vertical mixed use, maybe.
Just making it harder.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think I'm in support of this one, actually.
I'm sorry, was it?
I don't think I'm in support of this one.
I can't say I support this because this is a little bit too in the weeds, like I was talking about initially. I don't have the expertise to decide whether this is good or bad or maybe should be used in some areas or other areas. It's.
I'd say be upfront, say what you want, don't try to soft-sell it.
Oh, Mariah's ready.
Oh, Mariah?
Yeah, I would not be in support of this, of number four. And I do think that I would echo some of the things that you talked about, Stacy, in regard to just number two and having the defined areas. I think that that would be where I would land. Oh, Eileen, sorry.
I mean, I just agree with what I've been hearing. I believe that this, to deter, if everything has to be vertical mixed use, what kind of a community are we going to have? As we were just heard, I mean, the Corner Bakery that just came in is, got their own structure to it, their own class, their identification. You can drive through and understand who they are. This is not feeling very comfortable.
So this whole topic, taken as a whole, doesn't really sound like rocket science. Because I think we have guidance from the Central Issaquah Plan. And I think we know how Kirkland and Redmond did it. And I think we can talk about how large of an area would we want to try to implement this to. But I think we have pretty clear precedent out there on how we could move in the right direction. And this particular element isn't in it, which is why, to this point, I'm not supportive of this because I think we have a pretty clear path going forward that we. of this because I think we have a pretty clear path going forward that we could use.
Okay. So this one's off the table, it sounds like.
I agree.
Okay. So what I have heard, and tell me if I'm wrong, that number two, there's some desire to explore number two, which is to require a vertical mixed use in a defined geographic area. We haven't defined that as a node, a street, a triangle, square, whatever it may be. And the Pioneer project approach is not one that we are looking at further? Is that true? Okay. So we're down to number two.
Well, I want to be, I want to be clear that I don't think the council said, we don't like Pioneer projects. I think what the council said was, they weren't interested in the more DA's choice.
The approach to...
Yeah. And I think that's different than not interested in a Pioneer project.
Thank you.
Approach.
Thank you. So there has been some talk about having expertise to look at the areas and determine, again, on kind of looking at what currently exists and the street traffic and such. We did get a very quick, basic quote from our consultant who's doing the architectural review on Friday, after our conversation at Land and Shore, just to understand the range or the amount of money that they would require to do more in-depth analysis of this. And again, this is not set in stone. This is not a fully realized scope. But basically, we said to look at defining an area and what are those regulations and or incentives that would be required to make it happen. And they threw out the number about $50,000, and it would require through the end of the summer to complete, basically, the end of the, that would be a summary memo suggesting making recommendations. So again, there's negotiation, right, in that, and being able to kind of full, make a fuller scope and/or a little bit less cost. But there is an idea. And we, and again, we don't have to go with them, but that gives you an idea of the investment that would be required. And if that's something you so desire, we need to have an agenda bill, go to council and do that. We've already invested $25,000 for the Eco Northwest into this project initially last year, so just give you.
So what specifically were, was the firm asked, so what was the discussion like about what they would be doing? Was it just vertical mixed use or mixed use? Or was it the vibrancy piece?
It was the defining where the vertical mixed use, so looking at, so basically this, figuring out what the locations are and if there are incentives and or regulations that would help to get, make that happen, right? And so what are the, what's the, what are we adopting in September, right? Or a little later now, to actually end up moving forward to get vertical mixed use? So the vibrancy is a much broader topic, right?
I don't know. I don't know, right? Because I don't know, it's not my expertise. But I would, I would be just as concerned that, I want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And so what are we going to get if we get a firm to tell us where we should put in mixed use? What is that going to look like 30 years from now? Is it going to look like what we envisioned? So that, I'm more, I'm interested in more of what the scope of the, of the ask.
We can work on, we can define that a little fuller.
So I guess in listening to everybody's comments tonight, something that Bill said jumped out at me. I think if we're going to go outside and get expertise, what we should put on the table is the core. I think we put on the table, this is the area, it's the core, we know we're not going to get it everywhere, but start with that. I don't think we should limit the consultant, say, we've already decided it's only going to be a street or two or nodes. You give them the whole core, and you ask for what kinds of streets does it work on? So I'm not sure if it is these larger four and five lane roads that it works on, and can he not only look at where it ought to be, but even in terms of percentages? So does it always have to be at a major intersection? I believe it does. I think it should wrap around a corner on a major intersection. But percentages elsewhere? Is it 60% in certain areas and 100% in a denser area? So that, and of the 60%, does it all have to be retail? Or can it be a combination of retail service, commercial on the first floor? I think leaving the doors wide open as possible to let them be creative in coming back. But I'm still thinking that, I feel like we're throwing darts at a dartboard trying to figure it out ourselves. And so I'd kind of like to give them the whole thing and say, look at Kirkland, look at Redmond, not hearing a huge amount of, hey, we're going to incent this. I'm hearing more of a, we'll wait for it to come when the market says, but we want to permit it in all of the core and require it in certain areas of the core. That's sort of what I heard is, I didn't hear anybody say, let's throw incentives on the table, particularly. I don't know.
And I would just add to that, because if you look at those pieces, then what's critical to me is the piece outside of that piece. So in designating where you require vertical mixed use, so what are you going to acquire right next to it? Okay? So what is there to keep that vibrancy? So if you have something that, you know, that's the question for me. Because when you're, we're going to have some pretty stringent stuff somewhere, and you know it squeezes out. So the bigger question for me is what's going to be next door to it? So defining that. So that's, if that question you're asking them is, is not just, oh, give me one spot, here it is. Everything else too, where that lies, is critical.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So if you're saying, and I'm just, one of these circles is one of the nodes, right? Outside this circle, you want them to also say what that zoning, the code should be for that as well, or?
Yes, or at least a description. So they would pick these areas with their knowledge and say, this is where it's best, with the understanding of what's around there now.
Yeah.
Okay? And what would come, and also those codes that we require there. Because, like I say, you can't go from vertical mixed use here to, you know, single-story, you know, residential next door. I mean, you know, you have to have something next door that's going to be complementary and be able to expand, right? Especially if you're a fairly small area. Right? So that area around is, to me, the more critical one. Because we're going to define something very tightly probably in the vertical mixed use requirement.
I think you're talking about the transition.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay. Next. Paul looks like he wants to say something.
Yeah, I do, I do think, thank you, Stacy. It's hard to have this conversation without talking about vibrancy and kind of what feel we want to create. So it would be unfortunate to invest further into it and not have that be part of the conversation. And I think it immediately leads you to kind of a more comprehensive conversation, which, like I've mentioned already a couple times, about other programs that we could possibly do to help businesses be successful that consider this. But also, you know, maybe a city-type investment of a park or some other amenity in the adjacent area that would create incentive, but it's actually creating something of value for the public, for the people that are here now and who are going to remain here and people who are going to come later as well. As, and to me, a comprehensive look like that is a conversation about achieving a place there that's there and a vibrancy. And it would be unfortunate to keep that out of the conversation.
We can add that and see if that changes drastically the price. Yeah.
So, any other comments? So, you know, this conversation is, we're having this conversation because we're in a moratorium, and we're trying to work as hard as we can to finish our work items, to get it lifted. And so it's not, it's just, and trying to do it right. We don't want to be here again in three and a half years going, what does two or three or four dozen projects do we have now that don't, aren't consistent? That's not a good plan. So what's the next step, then?
So we can work on a defining better scope. It sounds like there is some interest potentially, once you see that scope, to move forward with an allocation then for that. And that would be obviously conversations beyond here. That would have to, we need to move pretty quickly. I know that we're probably not going to, we're not going to meet the schedule that we have on the board here. And so that's something that, again, being aware of, and depending how big this conversation is around vibrancy, how far that last action gets pushed out. For right now, for sure, it will be pushed out because if they're not done until August, then that means we're in August and September for PPC and then farther into Land and Shore.
So the consultant we had before, I was really, really impressed with the amount of, how well they grasped what we were trying to do. We had a lot of public, interaction with the public, a lot of public meetings. I mean, this went on for years and years and years with Central Issaquah Plan. And I think we captured what we wanted, what we want very well. And a lot of that vibrancy, I don't see this as embarking on a new journey to figure out what we want in terms of vibrancy. And I have, from what I heard from that firm, I have a feeling that that firm knows what we need to do to get from here to there. And I highly doubt they're going to suggest some, you know, many, many months, multi-year plan, reach-out plan. Because it's all, it's all in the Central Issaquah Plan already. And so if we have to do some interim step, which is, you know, we, it looks like we can't get everything done that we want to do in terms of ensuring we get a vibrant area with mixed use, and we have to, but we also don't want to perhaps extend the moratorium, then I'm pretty sure we can figure out some interim step, whether it's requiring mixed use, vertical mixed use for a period of time until we can get these new codes done. I'm not interested in delay for the sake of delay. But we have to figure, be creative and figure out ways to do it right and do it now. It's just, it, I don't even think it's a question. I feel that strongly about it.
Okay.
But that's just me. Tola?
I really resonate with this idea that it's in the Central Issaquah Plan, and it's just a matter of, you know, the combination of what's in the Central Issaquah Plan, and I think the direction that you've heard council's preference this evening. I think you put those together, and I think you have a fairly tight and coherent work package for consulting.
Perfect. Yep. Rely on Central Issaquah Plan. Rely on the Central Issaquah Plan. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much for that direction, and we will be back ASAP with more information.
Jen, thank you for all of your work, and thank you for a couple of tough, particularly Land and Shore. It was a long meeting, and we kind of dumped, and so we thank you very much for...
Yeah, no, it was long for you guys as well. Right. Thank you.
Old Town SubArea Plan is the next item on the agenda. Dave Faber?
This is massive. This is where... This actually could be prominent.
Looks like we're taking a break. Have to catch the left.
Oh, okay. We're in the legislature, we lost half our people. Okay.
Empty chairs.
Give them time to, they're setting up. It's an IT break.
Oh, so let's, let's go talk about...
Are we taking a break?
No.
There it is.
Can I talk to the producer?
No.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break because we now don't have a quorum.
It's an IT break.[1374.41]
We're back. Next item on the agenda, Old Town SubArea Plan update presented by Dave Faber.
All right, hi.
Dave?
Hi. It's good to be here. Ready to switch gears from Central Issaquah to Old Town. Old Town, all right. Some goals for tonight is to briefly bring you up to speed, give you some context why we're here, what we're talking about. And then, we've had significant public outreach, and we'll, there's a lot in your packet, and I'm here to talk about it. Autumn is here to take us through the, kind of introduce that peak democracy tool. And then, we'd like to have a good discussion on some key policy issues that are in your packet tonight. So what, what's the plan and why are we doing it? It's a subarea plan, it's a subset of the comprehensive plan, and again, like the Central Issaquah Plan, it focuses just on those issues unique to Old Town. The broader issues remain in the comp plan, this focuses on Old Town. The original plan was adopted first in 1999, so it's been almost 18 years, it's been quite a while. There's been only one update in 2009, when the bypass, east side bypass that was in the plan, was removed to reflect council direction at the time. So it's been quite a while since that, and then, we focused work on Central Issaquah for many years, and when that was adopted in 2013, we said, council asked us to, let's refocus back to Old Town, focus our work there. So here's a little graphic from about that time, taking us to today and beyond. 2014, council gave us some goals, please focus down here, down here, right here. 2015, the Old Town Vitality Task Force was created and formed, appointed by the mayor to focus largely on the commercial areas of Old Town, and to help that become more vibrant and vital. And 2016, we had two open houses with general feedback and questions we'll talk about in a minute. It brings us to 2017, so we've had more outreach, we keep focusing the topics more and more detailed. PPC reviewed at three meetings this spring and a week and a half ago, recommended approval of the plan to the council with a couple conditions that we'll talk about. And finally, here we are tonight. So the context is that this is introduction, I hope to have a good conversation tonight, and then in your packet, May 15, is the plan, that you'll see the draft plan with a recommendation to refer to the Land and Shore Committee in June.
So tonight, you, what do you want to accomplish tonight?
So tonight, we want to give you feedback on the public outreach that we've briefly tried and packaged that up, and then launched into a discussion of some key policy issues that we've, we're going to bring up. I'd like to kind of get your feedback and help you give guidance, or get the pulse of your, the full council as they launch into the Land and Shores discussion later.
Okay, so council comments on what you, what's presented tonight, so will be helpful for Land and Shore to keep in mind when it comes to us.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
So, just to bring up a public outreach summary, there were two processes in 2015 and 2016 on, you could say, different projects, but they had their own process, a lot of public meetings, comments, and those, those two projects, the Old Town Vitality Task Force, the Streetscape Plan that just finished, I think here at council a bit ago, and a lot of issues that we were able to take that information and be aware of it, and, and help inform as we write this plan. And then, as I mentioned, we had open houses in May, November, starting with general topics. As we progressed, we started to see concern or comments about building scale and character in different parts of Old Town, and, and the ever-present traffic issue. And, and we want to get some more feedback on the cut-through traffic through the neighborhood. So that focused down to the discussion with the senior center, the brew house, and then the online survey. I want to point out with the senior center, it was helpful to go out into the community and go to lunch that day and meet with several senior citizens, and we had, with the help of some volunteers, handed out some of the online surveys, so we get more of the seniors who might not focus on computers as much, to get their input. Here's a, here's a one slide, I'm going to quickly go through this, and then, we'll talk about, a little about the electronic survey. So, what are the challenges, or for example, what don't you like, what do you like, and what's your vision looking to the future? So if you can summarize a lot of input, it feels like, over the last year or so, some of the things we heard are, some codes today prevent or create a barrier to kind of achieving that vibrant front-street redevelopment vision. Still historic, but the, the task force came up with a list of recommendations in their report, and we factored many of those into the plan. So those were some challenges. Traffic, as I mentioned, large-scale duplex residential development, we're seeing more of that, kind of the boxy three-story buildings, some comments about that. Parking has already been acknowledged by council as a challenge for downtown, asked us to look into that by the end of 2018, I believe. There are gaps in the already pretty good pedestrian-bike network, but there are still gaps, there's work to be done there. What do you like? We heard things like small-scale, historic, quaint, quiet, and, and always walkable, walkable, walkable. So that kind of character in the residential and the commercial areas of, of Old Town. And then, like 1999, what's the vision for the future? A lot of the feedback we keep hearing is, please preserve the historic scale and character of both the commercial and residential areas of, of this part of Issaquah. But at the same time, especially focus on the commercial areas to increase the vitality and the vibrancy of the business community on Front Street, and then consider coming out East Sunset Way, we can talk about in a bit. And then, so that's, and then finally, the electronic survey, like I said, focused on kind of those two primary topics, building scale and character in three parts of Old Town, and the traffic issues. So before I go into those results, I'm going to turn it over to Autumn to introduce us, just how does peak democracy, this tool, work?
And Dave, just a quick question. On the list of the open houses that you had, what were the number of residents or business people that showed up, and did you get repeat people, or did you get new people at different venues?
I would say, at the May, last year in May, it was like 50 or 60 or so, something like that. The one in November was less, it was November, it was raining, probably about 30 or so. 20 to 30 at the brew house, there were 40 or 50 people eating lunch at the senior center, and I'd say 20 or 30 stood up and walked up to the, the easels we had and posted dots on the, the easels. There were some repeats, there were some new, you know, I get to see friendly faces after a while.
Thanks. All right, so we launched our Peak Democracy Tool, which we call Engage Issaquah, and this is the first survey results that we have using that tool. So I'm taking advantage of this moment to show you the tool one more time online with our data now, instead of in other cities, and I'm here to answer any questions about the tool and its capabilities as Dave goes through the results. I've pulled up the page, which is issaquahwa.gov/engage, and then I've gone directly to our Old Town survey, and this will remain up and on our website. It, it won't go away, so this data will remain, so you can go back to it a year from now, or much, whenever you want. And you can look through and see that there were 164 people who registered with us to provide their feedback, and you can go through and look at the results, and then you also can filter it in many different ways. So you can filter it by demographics, and as you register, you provide information like age and gender. So here I can say, I only want to look at the results from people who are age 40 to 49, or I want to select two or three age groups and see what the feedback was. You also can search by a map, and we've used our Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator's map of Issaquah neighborhoods to see our feedback. And of the 164 responses, most came from Squawk and Old Town. The third most popular was outside of Issaquah, which is interesting. But you also can then look and filter through each neighborhood and see what was a priority based on the neighborhood, which is fun to do as well. And then you also can filter by response. So you can say, I only want to look at people who decided that they like alternative A for this question, and they also support lower building height. And then, as you create your criteria, you can apply that filter and see who else matches that opinion. So I just encourage you to go online and play with that tool. It's really powerful, and it's, it's really interesting to look at the different ways you can arrange the data. That said, I'm also going to turn on now my administrative mode. And while there were 164 people who registered with us to provide their feedback, there were also 313 who didn't. So you'll see in your packet, all of the responses, there were 477, which is a significant number of people. It's the most we've had fill out a survey, except for some that we might have posted on social. We did one on Twitter that was just a question and got several thousand, but this is the most.
Can you do a map on that one, Autumn, of what the both was?
Sure. Oh, you know, you can't do that actually for the map.
Oh, okay.
Or for most of the data, because they didn't provide it.
You can only do it for the register.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. So I'm here to answer any questions as we walk through this, but Dave was going to go through the data. This will be a little clunky, but we'll pull up the visuals so you can, if you can see these at all. These are also available in your packet, too. Yep, Tola?
Is there any standard in terms of when you have the option of registered versus unregistered data? The internet, the internet is full of unregistered comments on, on websites that life is just so much better when I avoid those, like some of the ones that are available on YouTube and, you know, Seattle Times and things like that. People seem to, there's a, there's a, there's a question around the quality of the data. So what do you do in this, in your profession? What do you do when you've got registered and unregistered data, and what do you do? Is there any concern about the quality of the unregistered data, I guess is how I, my question?
So one reason we like the Vennary Peak Democracy is that they go through and, and look at the IP addresses to see if there's any, any duplicates, and if so, if there's somebody that's filling the survey out over and over again to, to provide the same answer. So there is that quality control, but you're right, we don't know where these people live, we don't know, we don't have a lot of information on them. So that's why you can, there's two ways to look at the data, and you, we've provided all of it to you, and then you also can go online and just look at those who are registered and play around with the filters. But you're right, there's a, there's a level of quality when you register. And also, as people start using this tool more, they can, we can see how often they've been active in providing their feedback, and that's, so that's another filter you can look at, is say, have these people also filled out a survey before, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're going to run through this, tag-team this?
Sure.
Right? Which one do I, well, so.
I'm wondering if we need to keep, so I haven't seen it, but I wonder if we need to keep in mind the, that this is going to land in shore, and I don't know how much detail we want to get into.
Yeah.
So, so given that it's 8:15, and, and I'm not telling you how to do it, because I don't know what you're doing, I'm.
We could just ask questions.
We, sure, we were going to walk through the questions, but you have that all in your packet, if you wanted to read through it on your own.
Good.
Okay.
And I filled it out because I live in Old Town. I'm registered.
Six times.
And six times unregistered.
Six times, yeah.
Have a question?
So, so go ahead, Autumn.
So we don't have to walk through the questions, but we can move on with Dave's presentation.
I'm, I'll entertain, you know, I'm not trying to shut it down, but.
It's coming back.
Yeah, it is coming back, it's going to committee coming back.
I don't have a preference, I'm just, I would like them just to go through their plan, whatever they were going to do to present, but be conscious of the time.
That's a lot of questions.
We can skip this part, and, and I think as we go through the various issues, I'll be talking about some of the feedback we received.
Okay.
And so that can help us do that.
Seems a good way to do it.
Okay. So after public input, we, we go to the next part of this, which is to have a discussion with you all about what we feel are some remaining policy issues, get feedback from you all, to let you know where the administration stands on these policies, and to get your feedback. I guess we'd say, these policies were developed with input from the survey we just talked about, but also the open houses, and our combined knowledge of what we do, so it's, it's kind of a combination of inputs. As I go through this, the idea is to introduce each one, kind of give you some, some pros and cons, or background, and then engage in discussion. We have a lovely flip chart here tonight, so if it helps to kind of jot down your ideas as we go through these, kind of give a straw poll, or whatever, let's get started, so.
Dave, just a quick question. So in the version of the old, the updated Old Town SubArea Plan, are these policy questions in, are, are there proposed answers to these policy questions in that track version changes of the document?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an administration recommendation for every one that I'm going to bring up right now.
And planning policies is in there as well?
Is in there as well, and they differed on two of them.
They did differ.
That we'll talk about right now.
Okay, great.
So, let's get started. So, topic number one has to do with what, what should be the boundary of Old Town that we look at. The, the red and the black is what was created as the boundary back in 1999, and that's what the plan was based on. As we looked at this boundary at the north end, you know, as you come south on Front Street, you, you hit the, the bridge of the East Fork or the Creek, and see the Mercantile Building, and the kind of the "Welcome to Historic Issaquah" sign, and that was kind of a feeling of, well, that's kind of where historic Old Town seems to begin. There's a distinct character between there, and north of there is more of the suburban 50s, 60s type of development, of the former Staples and the bank, and, and so forth. And then, on the west side of that red area is Confluence Park, which did not exist in 99, and so the boundary of the current plan includes most of it, but it bisects the southwest corner, it's, it's out of it. So we had to pick in or out. Confluence Park is important to the Old Town, it's important to Central Issaquah, it's important to, I think, all of Issaquah. So whether it's in or out, it still has its own character and its own thing, it's kind of a choice, in or out. So, recommend, the recommendation of the administration is to remove this portion, and in our discussion with PPC, we heard testimony from some public folks saying, we like it the way it is, just leave it, and PPC went with that recommendation, and that's the one, that's one of the two items they recommend, keeping the boundary as it is. So, that's topic number one for any discussion.
One of the questions is to remove the E from Old Town, but the bottom of this boundary map doesn't have an E on it.
The reason, okay, there's a good reason for that, so, so we're going, that's the last topic in this, in this thing. We'll go to that.
That's okay, we don't really, I mean.
So we're recommending remove the E, so that's why the recommendation is to remove the E, so it's not here. But if you choose to put it in, we will put it back.
See how it feels, yeah, Mary Lee.
So when it comes to land and shore, I'm not sure how much information staff is presenting, but I'd like to see a list of pros and cons of why to do the boundary change, not just that the public wanted it and PPC recommended. What were your pros and cons of why the boundary should change?
Okay. We can spell that out further.
Yeah, and I would actually take it one step further, not just the pros and cons, but what the administration recommends and why. Tell us what you would like us to do, and tell us why you would like us to do that.
Well, I think we'd, okay.
Sure.
Right?
I would echo that, I'm not sure I have enough information on the removal of the top portion, and my question about that area is that now I see it brought up in terms of removing it from the Old Town boundary map, but there was also questions about whether it should be included in the Central Issaquah Plan, and whether the boundary should encompass some of that. So it, it's sort of like that area is becoming a little bit of no man's land, and I don't know why. So I, I would, oh, sorry, that'd be great to have more information on that.
Tola?
So, not to just throw lots of new things into the mix, but I think if you're going to talk about where are the proper boundaries for Old Town, I think there's an argument that says that the area south of Clark is not really Old Town in the same way the area north is. It's primarily residential neighborhoods that look a lot more like Squawk than they do, like, the rest of Old Town, and school facilities, right? So it's, it's a, it's, it has very different needs, and it seems like a lot of the things that we might want to do north of Clark would look very different than south of Clark. And again, I hate to add complexity rather than reduce complexity, but to me, if you're going to have that conversation.
Okay, thanks.
And if you're going to have it, I'd, I'd add a little bit of maybe down to Evans right in there, but yeah, all that school and all that other stuff is kind of.
Right, right down here, right?
Yeah, before you hit the schools. It's a continuous block, because below there, like you say, is mainly schools and park and so on and so forth.
Okay. Any other comments about topic number one?
Look like it. Next.
All right. So switching gears, we go into what kind of the survey looked at, and some feedback that we heard at several open houses. Gets at three geographic areas of Old Town, and what, what is the vision for the building scale and character as it moves forward in the future? So, the first one is the Front Street area, the second we'll talk about is East Sunset Way.
We have a lovely flip chart here tonight, so if it helps to kind of jot down your ideas as we go through these, kind of give a straw poll or whatever. Let's get started, so.
Dave, just a quick question. So in the version of the old, the updated Old Town Subarea Plan, are these policy questions in, are there proposed answers to these policy questions in that track version changes of the document?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an administration recommendation for every one that I'm gonna bring up right now.
And planning policies is in there as well?
Is in there as well, and they differed on two of them.
They did differ.
That we'll talk about right now.
Great.
So, let's get started. So, topic number one has to do with what, what should be the boundary of Old Town that we look at. The, the red and the black is what was created as the boundary back in 1999, and that's what the plan was based on. As we looked at this boundary at the north end, you know, as you come south on Front Street, you hit the, the bridge of the East Fork or the Creek and see the Mercantile Building and the kind of the Welcome to Historic Issaquah sign. And that was kind of a feeling of, well, that's kind of where historic Old Town seems to begin. There's a distinct character between there and north of there is more of the suburban 50s, 60s type of development of the former Staples and the bank and so forth. And then on the west side of that red area is Confluence Park, which did not exist in 99. And so the boundary of the current plan includes most of it, but it bisects the southwest corner. It's, it's out of it. So we had to pick in or out. Confluence Park isn't important to the Old Town, it's important to Central Issaquah, it's important to, I think, all of Issaquah. So whether it's in or out, it still has its own character and its own thing. It's kind of a choice in or out. So, recommendation of the administration is to remove this portion. And in our discussion with PPC, we heard testimony from some public folks saying, "We like it the way it is. Just leave it." And PPC went with that recommendation. And that's the, that's one of the two items they recommend, keeping the boundary as it is. So, that's topic number one for any discussion.
One of the questions is to remove the E from Old Town, but the bottom of this boundary map doesn't have an E on it.
The reason, okay, there's a good reason for that, so. So we're going, that's the last topic in this, in this thing. We'll go to that.
Go on, go on, go on.
That's okay, we don't really, I mean...
So we're recommending remove the E. So that's why the recommendation is to remove the E, so it's not here. But if you choose to put it in, we will put it back.
See how it feels. Yeah, Mary Lee.
So when it comes to land in Shore, I'm not sure how much information staff is presenting, but I'd like to see a list of pros and cons of why to do the boundary change, not just that the public wanted it and PPC recommended. What were your pros and cons of why the boundary should change?
Okay. We can spell that out further.
Yeah, and I would actually take it one step further, not just the pros and cons, but what the administration recommends and why. Tell us what you would like us to do, and tell us why you would like us to do that.
Well, I think we'd, okay.
Land and Shore.
Yeah.
I would echo that. I'm not sure I have enough information on the removal of the top portion. And my question about that area is that now I see it brought up in terms of removing it from the Old Town boundary map, but there was also questions about whether it should be included in the Central Issaquah Plan and whether the boundary should encompass some of that. So it, it's sort of like that area is becoming a little bit of no man's land, and I don't know why. So I, I would, oh, sorry. That'd be great to have more information on that.
Tola?
So, not to just throw lots of new things into the mix, but I think if you're gonna talk about where are the proper boundaries for Old Town, I think there's an argument that says that the area south of Clark is not really Old Town in the same way the area north is. It's primarily residential neighborhoods that look a lot more like Squaw than they do like the rest of Old Town, and school facilities, right? So it's, it's, it has very different needs, and it seems like a lot of the things that we might want to do north of Clark would look very different than south of Clark. And again, I hate to add complexity rather than reduce complexity, but to me, if you're gonna have that conversation.
Okay, thanks.
And if you're gonna have it, I'd add a little bit of maybe down to Evans right in there. But yeah, all that school and all that other stuff is kind of...
Right, right down here, right?
Yeah, before you hit the schools. It's a continuous block, because below there, like you say, is mainly schools and park and so on and so forth.
Okay. Any other comments about topic number one?
Next.
All right. So switching gears, we go into what kind of the survey looked at and some feedback that we heard at several open houses. Gets at three geographic areas of Old Town and what, what is the vision for the building scale and character as it moves forward in the future? So the first one is the Front Street area. The second we'll talk about is East Sunset Way, and then the single-family duplex neighborhoods north and south of Sunset Way, right out the door here. So the first one is Front Street. The vision that we're proposing is to maintain the traditional character and scale of the commercial core, CBD, but at the same time allowing to grow and evolve and get more vibrant and vital. So that's another thing we heard in the 1999 plan was, yes, everyone likes the historic element, but some of the businesses, the economics needs some, some help to, to survive and compete with other parts of Issaquah on the east side. So there's two slides here that talk about, there's two bullets here, and then I'll go to slide two. Throughout the discussion, we looked at these two height items, and they kind of go together. The current zoning allows a height of 45 feet, and as we're learning to have a high retail floor for the first floor, like 12 to 15 feet, it's really difficult to get four true floors within 45 feet. You just kind of bump up against that limit. So the proposal is to bump it a couple feet to 50 feet or so to allow really a person to achieve four stories on Front Street. At the same time, though, we want to keep the vision as you look south and north of Front Street, not to create a narrow kind of canyon effect, and is to keep what currently is allowed in the standards today, kind of a wedding cake of step back above the second floor. So this proposes to maintain that and to maintain the pedestrian character, but also on the, on the photo you see there, you can see down south to Squawk Mountain. So what does it take to kind of keep that view opened up?
Eileen?
What's the step back on the second? How many feet?
Today it's six feet. Six feet.
That allows for a balcony if they want, or could they use that?
Yeah. Yeah, you could have a balcony on the...
Okay, so that, that step back could be used or...
Usable open, outdoor space?
Outdoor open, yeah.
Yes, yes. And that's, six feet is today's, right? If we're, this is again, it gets awfully detailed. This is policy, remember? We're not talking code tonight, but it gives us direction to the next step in 2018 or beyond to adopt codes if we all choose. So take six feet, if we want to open it up, it could go smaller, larger, whatever.
Really?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So do we have any four-story buildings now?
On Front Street, I am not aware of.
So what is magical about four stories? Why, if we want to maintain an Old Town character, why wouldn't we just stay at three stories or reduce it to two stories?
So that's, that's, that's to capture on the list?
Yeah, that's just to capture.
We're not gonna answer all the questions.
I was gonna start it.
We're just capturing questions.
Okay, and then the second question goes to style. And for, besides the theater, for a lot of the false front style that's currently on Front Street and two-story, it doesn't have the step back. So how do you maintain the false front character and step it back? I'm just looking at the brown one, because two stories, false front.
Second floor, third floor.
Right there.
It says back above second, oh, so it's only if it's third floor.
At the third floor, you start stepping back, and there's two stories right there.
Okay. Well, then I guess the question would be architecturally, is that compatible with Old Town style to step it back? Or is that just a massing and bulking thing that we would want to do to reduce scale? Does it then end up contradicting what the desired architectural character was?
Two points about your first question about four stories.
You can, it's for Land and, if we're just gonna capture questions, it can all come at Land and Shore, that's fine.
All right.
I'd reiterate that if we want to keep character, I think three stories is more than enough since that's an additional floor, because basically...
You have a question?
Question is, well, the question is...
Why four?
Why four? But also, when you say 45 to 50 feet, that actually could allow a five-story building. If you didn't put, you're saying if you allow a bigger floor, that'll still allow four floors, but it actually could allow five stories of regular height. So just by limiting by feet doesn't help me with character.
So a comment on that, as we have options, I think we did in the Central Issaquah Plan, is if we could consider requiring the first floor to be extra tall if we wanted to have retail on that main street, it would push that up, and so someone couldn't do that. But we're, we're taking questions now, right?
Yeah, we're, um...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't hear a specific question in there, but I...
Well, why, why four stories?
Okay, perfect.
Great.
If it's related to character.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Because character doesn't work.
Anything else on this one? Nope, put it on.
So continuing on Front Street, there's some other policy proposals to help us maintain or enhance the vision that we're all shooting for. The first one talks about changing, how to get the right landscape vision that we all want to get on Front Street. So today we have kind of a blunt tool, which is the impervious pervious ratio that says up to 85% of a property on front can be covered with hard surface, and 15% has remained green plants. It doesn't say where, there's not much guidance on that. So the proposal is to change that from an impervious pervious requirement instead to a greenery or a landscape requirement. So for example, if in the photo you see there, there's, there's a desire to have some greenery right up against the sidewalk at the building front, let's adopt a policy directing us to adopt codes later, really asking for the kind of vision that we'd like to see on Front Street.
Maybe just a question about the streetscape plan that we just adopted, kind of goes against that, but maybe we can discuss that at Land and Shore? Because they actually show rain gardens on Front Street right now.
An important point, this is for the private property portion.
Ah.
This is the private land when they're redeveloping or developing.
Okay.
Streetscape public land, yeah.
Verification.
Questions, comments? Okay. Number two has to do with stormwater requirements. So you might recall, the Department of Ecology requires the city to comply with the new stormwater code, which says if feasible, we should require onsite infiltration on a property when development or redevelopment happens. So in some cases, if this code, if the vision is to push the buildings right up to the sidewalk with zero lot line on the sides, but at the same time require something like a rain garden, there's a conflict there. And so the DOE gave cities the option where there's a subarea plan such as this, to choose various places where we can say the vision supersedes the infiltration requirement. And so our proposal here is not for all of Old Town, but just to focus it on the CBD-zoned areas, Front Street and back to First Place, to say in those areas where we, we want the vision that we're talking about, that the development standards would prevail over the onsite infiltration. That's, that's getting at. And that option was chosen for Central Issaquah to say that.
Okay.
Okay. And then finally...
So wait, I guess I'm not sure, the other ones you said you had a recommendation on, you're, you're just presenting something now, you're not saying...
We're recommending that the CBD zone is allowed to...
Okay. And the same with the last one, you're recommending to have a, a greenery requirement versus a impervious requirement?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't get that.
Uh huh. And then finally, the, the last one is kind of a catch-all. So you may recall, there's a set of Old Town Design Guidelines today, right? I'm gonna pull it out if I find it or not. It's on the web, it's about 80 pages of design standards and guidelines. This would be a policy to update those to, to the vision that we're talking about tonight to, with codes and design standards, similar to kind of what we did with the Central Issaquah Plan Development Design Standards. But not the same, not the same codes, but same format.
Couple of questions, Dave. So right now, they're guidelines, is the recommendation to turn them into standards? Put them in code?
Yes, but today they are also standards. There are, the, the document, if you start reading through, there's, there's a lot of shells throughout there.
Yep.
There are some should sprinkled in.
Okay.
So today they are standards.
And then the second one, is that an exercise we would do internally, or would we have external architectural help for that?
I think that's a choice we can all make. All right, so that's the last discussion points on Front Street. We're gonna move on to a next part of Old Town, which is out East Sunset Way. So today, anyway, the vision is to maintain the mix of small-scale multifamily and also continue a mix of uses of small offices and services. That's what the zoning and the plans today allow. And you know, like the, the photo you see there is a mix of single-family and two-story apartments. There's the church there, kind of one and a half story, and then there's the two four-story multifamily projects on the south side of Sunset that have happened the last 10 years. Through the survey, we, we received some feedback saying, "Please drop the height, make it more small-scale than those two buildings," for example, "that you see there." So these policies are proposed here to reduce the height from four stories down to three stories to, to get at that smaller scale, whether it's multifamily or a mixed-use combination of mixed-use and residential upstairs. No change is a recommendation to the impervious, which is half of the lot today has to remain green plants. And that I've heard over the years is a real barrier, kind of a limitation to how much a person can build there. And then third gets at kind of what are the land uses we'd all like to see on, on Sunset Way? Today, office and services can happen there, and you know the various homes have been converted. The task force had some discussion about retail. I believe they recommended retail out Sunset Way to Sixth Avenue. The survey, I think, was mixed both ways, yes or no. There's a concern on our part that Front Street is a good kind of core of retail and that kind of policy discussion, should there be a concentration of retail right along Front Street? And there's a little concern that if we allow retail out Sunset, would that potentially dilute the vibrancy of retail on Front Street? So for that reason, we're recommending not to add retail to Sunset. Stacy?
One of the things that I'd love to hear out of Land and Shore is to have a representative from DIA come and talk about their assessment of, of all these various options. This is one in particular, there's no retail. I'm really curious what, what they think, if they think it's good to try to concentrate it more on, on Front Street, or if in their heart of hearts, they really think like it would be an improvement to allow retail down that street. And there's a number of these, I keep thinking, what would DIA think? Because, you know, unlike Central Issaquah Plan, you know, we have a strong, thriving, you know, organization in place that, that has the long-term strength of, of Old Town at its heart. So I'm very interested to see what they think.
Okay.
That's a good comment.
Paul?
Dave, the, the first recommendation to reduce the base height from four stories to three stories, so... What's the basis of that recommendation in terms of the survey and the data that's been collecting? Is it just gleaned from comments, maybe also that you held, from the meetings that you held? Or is it an aggregation of many comments that were, come from the survey? Could you? And so, so, so in a more general way of saying that, you're making a number of very specific recommendations. And when we come to, we come to Land and Shore, we come back to this, I mean, that, that same thing. Tell us how, what's the basis of this recommendation? If there's, and especially if it's, if it's in the information that we can glean ourselves and, and whether it be read comments or whatever, I'd like, it'd be good to have that along with the recommendation.
Tola?
Are the two townhome, large townhome complexes, one of which is clearly prominent in this photo, are those considered three-story or four-story? Because the first floor is parking.
They're four stories. First floor is parking and lobby, but they're four. And they, they fall under that 40-foot height, just squeaked right under it. Yeah.
Okay. Because it seems interesting that we would try to, you know, having, I mean, it doesn't matter what, as a council member, think of any particular one development, but I actually like that those are there. I mean, that provides an additional form of housing in Old Town that isn't elsewhere, and clearly market conditions built them. And so if people are saying they don't want to, you know, the point of this is, is, would be partially to prevent things like that from happening in the future, I think it'd be, you want to have a conversation about, how, how does housing like that fit into downtown Issaquah? Because I, I've always liked it, but, you know, ask seven different people and you get seven different answers.
That's kind of what we're getting, yes, yes.
Other questions for Eileen?
Just a thought, we're talking about no change to the 4,000 square feet and no retail in there. But if you're starting to look at the, so there's gonna be no change to the 50% impervious, so it's already gonna be a very small unit that can go in there. And sometimes there might be a commercial or retail operation that is very, basically you're gonna get a very small retail operation in there, and maybe something very specifically, very specific to some particular industry that still wants to have a very small retail sale of some of their items or something. So I'm not sure that really has, I could see that we might be able to miss some businesses locating there because of that requirement of no retail, even though it would be a very small retail product that they'd be selling.
Okay.
So maybe some analysis about, you know, why, why are, why, or why not? Yeah, you know what?
Because if this is a company who is mailing out or shipping out all of their product, it's still retail, but it doesn't necessarily attribute to customers walking down the street.
Mariah?
I guess I, I would have a question about the, when I'm looking at reducing the base height from four stories to three stories, if, the way the questions were asked and some of the comments that, that came in, if parking was being considered at that time when, when that recommendation was going from four stories to three stories? Because I just, as I was listening to Tola talk about the, you know, having the parking be the first floor, that seems like something that would be important, so I'd like to know.
Okay. Anything else? Next.
Okay. So moving off East Sunset Way to the third area, which gets at the single-family and duplex developments north and south of Sunset Way, so Andrews, Alder, Bush, Birch, Creequeway, Roston, Clark, all those areas. The vision proposed is to preserve the character scale and historic integrity of the single-family duplex residential areas. The preference, survey preference, I think, was largely, came back, the house you see in the bottom left was the strong winner, or whatever, strong preference for that, that type of kind of one or one and a half, two-story, turn of the century house. So, and then reacting, I guess we have some comments about some duplexes that have been constructed recently that are three stories tall. They, they're more modern or contemporary, some negative feedback on those. So the policy proposal here is to reduce the height from three stories down to two stories throughout this neighborhood. We're not ready to go to feet, but just three to two. The next one is the lot consolidation. This one was queried on the survey. People, you know, buy many lots and then build a bigger house. Should we consider this? And we're proposing yes. Let's prevent the small lots that exist throughout Old Town to stay that way. It might promote smaller homes on smaller lots, keeps more of that.
David, could you explain that one a little bit? I'm not familiar with where that's happened, the lot consolidation.
I don't think it's happened very much. I think it's more looking to the future.
I was trying to think of anywhere that it happened. So maybe more of a preventing something?
Yeah.
Because I, I can't think of where that's happened. I was wondering if it was for the townhouse, the larger townhouse ones? But that also looks like 6,000 square feet, so.
Those are fitting at 6,000 square feet, yeah.
Which is the not lot size.
Right.
Okay, so I think the question really, but what's the basis? I mean, I think there's an idea, but what's the basis for it? And specifically?
Okay.
I have a question. How do you, how do you enforce traditional design materials, single-family character?
Well, that's, that's the proposal, and if, if the city chose to go that route... Well, that's the proposal, and if the city chose to go that route, I guess I didn't add the last bullet there, which would be to consider adopting development and design standards to say that. And that's, that would be consideration for duplexes and possibly for single-family homes.
Yeah, traditional design is a challenge, right? I think about Palo Alto. If you're building a house in Palo Alto, you have like nine styles, right? Craftsman's one of them, there's, I don't remember all the others, but I have a friend who's got a Craftsman. And, you know, there's very specific design standards associated with Craftsman. There's a very strong design standards associated with the other eight. And that's how they do it, right? And so they know houses that get built in that area of Palo Alto are all going to be built to a certain standard. It seems like wrapped up in this number three is a lot of work if you're going to have something that has any teeth to it. A lot of work.
It could be a lot of work.
Well, I think we probably, okay, you've already gone on there.
And a question about inventory, too. It seems to me, and this is totally just estimating, a significant portion of the housing stock is existing Rambler. And so it'd be interesting to know, I mean, there is some of this stock that has been remodeled, and some of the stock that has been built. But then there's a huge portion that's Rambler, and I think if I owned a Rambler and I was renovating it, I would be confused as to what to do. And so it'd be nice to know how many styles do we have right now? Do we already have six or nine? And should we be working towards that? And then, I don't know, I just, I thought the pictures in the survey didn't really cover the current stock of what we have.
That's a good point, I've noticed that as well.
The Rambler piece.
Anything else? Okay, moving on.
The last two get at, just emphasizing accessory dwelling units, mother-in-law apartments are allowed today, attached, detached. There's a lot of feedback about providing options for affordable housing and families in transition. And that's why the cottages are proposed as well, another kind of alternative housing type, smaller housing units.
David, a question about the cottages. Can you explain that a little bit at Land and Shore, what that means? Because just looking at the example you have there, you'd have to combine lots to do that. And in the other one, we said no lot consolidation. So if we don't have a cottage zoning right now, that looks like that's a kind of a heftier work item than some of the others.
And that would be a work product to create probably a cottage zoning requirement. That concludes kind of the building scale character for the three areas. We're ready to switch gears to traffic, connectivity, and mobility. And turning that over, we've got Kurt here tonight, Kurt Seaman.
How many more do we have? How many more?
We've got this slide, and then remove the E or not, and then we're done. So I'm going to turn this one over to Kurt to take us through a discussion on...
We're way over, but I just wanted to know.
Thank you very much, Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into great detail and read you everything that you already have in your packet, but I did want to highlight a few things here about connectivity and mobility in Old Town that is especially, that we've heard is especially important to the community. And what we've done here, for the most part, is, you'll see in your packet, we really haven't changed any of the policies dramatically from what was in there at the start of this process, but we have sort of reorganized them a bit and consolidated them a bit. There is a lot of redundancy in the original policies where we sort of mentioned the same things over and over. So we've tried to clean it up and be really clear on what it is we're trying to focus on relative to connectivity and mobility and transportation in Old Town. And they really, so the vision that you'll see in your packet, that I think that's really important to highlight is that this is an interconnected system that focuses on moving people safely and effectively through the area. So it's not cars, it's not transit, it's not bikes, it's not any one of those specifically, but we're really focusing on how people get around in Old Town. And fundamental to that, we believe, is a multimodal transportation system that gives people opportunities and choices to get around in a variety of ways, all the ones I just mentioned, peds and bikes and transit and streets, of course, and all of those things that support the character of the community. So there's really sort of three main elements here that are the goals that come out of that. And one is to continue to develop this connected system of streets for all modes that ties that community together effectively. So, and the one sort of piece there that isn't just about developing that connected system is the parking. So we know that parking is a real premium in Old Town, and so that we're always looking at opportunities to maximize parking wherever we can in Old Town. Certainly provide as much on-street parking as is feasible on each and every street. So that's, that's sort of the main, and I can be happy to talk about this in any more detail if you'd like. The second bullet there, addressing traffic impact, so this isn't news to anyone, but traffic has a real impact on Old Town. And so it has an impact to Front Street, has an impact to East Sunset, has an impact to the neighborhoods in, adjacent to East Sunset. So our proposal here is to address this problem on two fronts. One is to, is to develop and implement traffic calming strategies with a variety of tools that will reduce, greatly reduce, cut through traffic and speeds in the neighborhoods in this area. And so that's attacking the problem on one front. And then the other, we know that the traffic in Old Town is not, much of it is not Old Town traffic, it's regional traffic. So the other area that we're addressing traffic in Old Town, besides looking at traffic calming, specific traffic calming in Old Town is to continue to focus on the regional traffic problems, and continue to work with all our partners, which we're doing on a variety of levels, but to look at solutions regionally that will reduce those regional traffic impacts to Old Town. So that's, that's the traffic impact part. And then finally, the multimodal system, as I mentioned earlier, is really important to a robust, good-functioning transportation system in Old Town. So we have, in your packet, you'll see a series of non-motorized policies that focus on creating a, improving the non-motorized, the bike and ped facilities, and looking for opportunities to, especially for low-cost improvements there, making it easier and safer to get around in Old Town, either on a bike or by foot. And then the transit portion of that is a couple policies there, but a lot of them focused around working with Metro and Sound Transit, our transit providers to increase service and to expand transit opportunities in Old Town. And then there's a section that you'll see in there about ride-sharing and looking at commute reduction policies. And especially, we sort of pointed out Issaquah School District has a potential to really make improvements, because a lot of the traffic, of course, that impacts Old Town is a result of the schools being there. So that's just a high-level overview, and I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
So Kurt, looking at the survey answers, a lot of people repeated the same comments over and over again, which was reduce the volume of traffic coming down Front Street. And I can't remember what other ideas were, maybe pushing it over to Newport, I'm not really sure. But we never talk about those as part of the Old Town subarea plan that I see, and our approach has been to just talk about someday we'll be fixed when the regional solutions come. At Land and Shore, can we talk about something beyond just the regional solutions? Because I think the community expressed really strongly that they're looking for volume reduction. They're not looking for efficiently moving more, this amount through or more. They're looking for volume reduction. At some point, we have to start talking about that. And I think that has to happen in conjunction with the plan.
Yes.
Bill?
I think the other main thing is somehow we have to sit down with Issaquah School District and work with them, because that is just a major, major impact for all those schools. And with the school schedule changing, I don't know what that impact's going to be. I've heard some people think it's going to get worse because the timing's going to get worse. I don't know that or not yet. But we have to somehow coordinate that, because I tell you, when school's not in, it, traffic is totally different there. And so we have to realize that that is, in that area, it's not just regional traffic, it's that traffic, and it's tough.
Anything else?
I'm going to clarify, I want to question, one of them was, what other measures would you support to reduce speeding indoor traffic? And I think the context of the question was to consider those areas A, B, and C. You don't have that detail here.
I don't have that in front of me.
And a lot of the responses just address traffic in general in the Old Town area. And I was wondering if I'm confused, or because I thought part of this effort was to get specifically more information, or it was an attempt to get information about openness to options for traffic calming off East Sunset in particular, in those neighborhoods adjacent to East Sunset. So I just, I found that question, the question was just, you know, what other measures would you support to reduce speeding indoor traffic? Is that intended for all of the area, or is it just those neighborhoods off East Sunset? So if you don't know the answer now, maybe we can talk about it next week.
It sounds like a Land and Shore answer.
Yeah, yeah, because the way a packet's put together, it's not even clear either. So I wasn't, I didn't get to any of those meetings.
So I don't, I don't know exactly the history of that question, but I can tell you that, so the council has directed us to look at traffic calming in Old Town. And so that's something that is on our work plan for this year. It's probably a third and fourth quarter effort at this point. But we have started it, and as Councilmember Ramos can attest to, we have started to gather some data out there, especially in the areas B and C on your map. And so we're starting to gather both speeds and volumes in those areas to start. So we're not ready to come up with solutions, but we're getting started on the data collection part of it, and our intent is to gather enough data so that we can go out to this community and have a meaningful conversation about where the real issues are and what the possible solutions might be. I don't know if that exactly addresses what you're asking.
Well, I think your answer is, the scope of that question was the entire area, in all traffic, all conditions.
Yeah, and throughout Old Town, I believe that's true.
I guess I want to add, I think it was that, but it was, and here's the map that we're, so you all know. The concern we heard was cut-through traffic is an issue. And while we're asking the question, we, I think a lot of it was to ask, what is, give us feedback about various solutions for cut-through traffic of these three areas.
Okay, we'll talk more about that.
In addition to the many other outreach things that you're going to be doing for that, that was one other piece of information.
Other questions, or no?
Thanks, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt. The last one, the E, should it stay or should it go?
Should it stay or should it go?
Sing it now, okay? So the Old Town Task Force recommends remove the E. And I wrote down somewhere specifically what they said. Because the extra E is unnecessary and presents the wrong image for the neighborhood. So there's some feedback, and perhaps if DIA's here next time, we can get more feedback. Other testimony we heard was, the E adds some authentic, unique character by having an E. And if you remove the E, it's just old. So, you know, the word "old." So it's really a choice.
I'm expecting a 30-page memo with...
The pros and cons and so forth?
A list of every single area, town, what have you, jurisdiction in the United Kingdom that has the word "old" with an E.
The United Kingdom, and from what era does that come from, right?
Currently.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So these are probably a little scattered, but I wrote them down when I was going through the package. In the survey, there's a couple of questions on defining characteristics. But in the Old Town Design Guidelines, there are some characteristics for multifamily that could actually, on Front and Sunset, that could actually carry over. Is that what you're talking about, creating standards for housing? Would it actually come from that same document and be transferred over? Have you guys gotten to that point or not?
Into the residential areas, you're...
Yeah. Things, for example, the survey asks people to look at pictures, but it's really features that make it feel like Old Town, not necessarily styles? And so was there any conversation about those things that were listed in the design guidelines now for multifamily on Sunset and Front that could transfer over? For example, did planning policy talk about pushing buildings closer to the sidewalk and having entrances that come off the sidewalk, and having garages resussed, and having balconies and stoops and porches? Did they talk about that?
We didn't get to that level of detail. That's all for the future.
Okay. The other one was ADU. It seemed like there were a lot of comments about, from the public, concerns and suggestions about how to deal with ADUs. Is the question for Land and Shore just whether or not they want them? Or is it going to be, do you want them and is this what you want? Because there was a lot of information in the survey that said, make sure they're this, make sure they're that, make sure they have parking. And so are you asking us yes or no, or are you going to ask us yes or no on an ADU proposal?
I think we're asking, we're confirming that ADUs are allowed and confirming to continue with them.
I think at Land and Shore, we need more. I think if we're going to say yes, I think we need to hash it out a little bit more.
And if we want to keep the character of ADUs within the character of the neighborhood, we should consider going further with that.
And I think under Kurt's discussion, there was a lot of stuff in the survey that came up, transportation-wise, such as can we increase enforcement? Can we put the bypass back on the table? Can we move traffic to Newport? Also, tolling was mentioned, turn restrictions so that only locals can turn. Tolling, well, it was, once, twice. Encouraging southbound traffic to take a different route, no-through traffic. Actually, I wrote tolls again, it must have shown up twice. And establish and promote a commuter route. And so I want to make sure that when we have our conversation, we really dig into what the public provided in terms of all of those things. I think that was it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Just a serious comment on the E in Old. The only way it seems like it would make sense if, for the E to be in there is if there were actual early-city documents that referred to it with an E. So my question for Land and Shore would be, is there any historical legitimacy, you know, when we were Gilman or whatever the early towns were? Was it ever referred to with an E?
Interesting.
Versus the UK back when.
So the history of Old E.
I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm just, you know, it's possible.
Great. Okay, we'll finish with the next steps. So you're going to see the plan in the next council packet with policies, vision, goals. It's reformatted from the current plan, so the entire document is underlined. So when you see that, it's, like Kurt was saying, there's a lot of redundancy. We've really scrunched it down, but we tried to highlight key issues tonight. There's more in the plan that you'll see. Happy reading, and we look forward to more discussion at Land and Shore. And we'll see how many, we get through it in one meeting? Probably more than one. And that's the schedule up there. That's what we've got for tonight.
I had one ask, and that is to see the document in the package in both track changes and not-track changes, because I don't know how to manipulate it when it's online. Oh, so there isn't anything?
It's totally...
The answer was it's totally replaced, it's not available.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else before we move on?
Just wanted to clarify, so the task force and the administration is recommending dropping the E?
Correct. Yes.
No, I heard a very persuasive argument in this room a couple weeks ago about retaining it. And I flipped, I was in favor of dropping it, but not anymore for the reasons that were given. So we'll talk about that some more.
Deliberate later.
Great.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Compensation Philosophy by Lori Brown, Human Resources Director. Hi, Lori.
This is a mind shift.
Just a little. Just a little.
All right, here we go. Ready? Can you hear me? Stephanie and I are here tonight to discuss the classification and compensation study with you. The reasons that we're meeting with you tonight are, first, to inform you about the process that we'll be using for the study, second, to give you a heads-up. Ultimately, we'll be making recommendations as a result of the study that will require your approval, and to give you an opportunity to provide feedback regarding the draft philosophy statement, and to gain a sense of whether you already have goals for the compensation program that we'll be developing as a result of this study. We began the study in March, and we anticipate that the completion will be sometime in 2019. The goals of the study will be to evaluate our salary and benefits programs and compare our programs to the market, to accurately describe our jobs, and to clarify our pay practices and ensure that our practices are supported by market. The four phases of the project will be, the first phase will be a philosophy statement and guiding principles. That's the reason we're here tonight, is to obtain feedback regarding those principles. Phase two will be a classification analysis. We're going to do a full classification review, and we'll be revising all of our job descriptions. Phase three will be a market analysis. We'll do a comprehensive market review. A consultant will be hired to assist us with that phase of the process, and it will result in recommendations that we will, and a proposed budget for those recommendations. Phase four will be implementation. We will be negotiating the recommendations regarding bargaining unit employees, and for exempt staff, we'll be implementing those recommendations through the 2019 budget ordinance. Again, tonight, we are here to talk to you about the compensation philosophy statement. It was in your packet. If you don't have copies, let me know, and we've brought extra copies tonight. What the compensation philosophy statement does is, it identifies, it's essentially a mission statement for our compensation program. It identifies what is important to the city, it supports our values, goals, and objectives by guiding how we invest in salaries and benefits, and, and again, it serves as a mission statement. Tonight, we're asking you for feedback. We started, we began meeting with the SLT, we started a discussion with the SLT, and we've developed a beginning of a philosophy statement, and we would like to discuss that with you this evening. Do you have any questions before we get started in that discussion? Okay. Okay, so we're going to kind of switch and go to, go to a Word document, and Stephanie will take notes. So, do you have feedback regarding the proposed philosophy statement that we've provided? What is it? That's the one in your, in your... So I'm asking, because we might have it, but nobody's who's watching, and nobody here in the room has it. Okay. I can read it. "Our employees are our most important asset and play a significant role in our success. Through competence, innovation, and customer focus, our employees are integral to ensuring achievement of the goals identified in our city mission, vision, and salmon value statements. The city strives through the compensation program to support employees and to create an environment that fosters teamwork, recognizes achievement, and aligns with our service-level goals. The City of Issaquah's Compensation and Benefits Program is designed to support a flexible and responsive organization. It positions us to be competitive in the marketplace and ensures our ability to attract qualified and experienced candidates and to retain talented employees. Pay decisions are made consistently and with sensitivity to the compensation practices of the public and private organizations with whom we compete for talent. It is our policy and our commitment to communicate openly and often our underlying compensation philosophy and all information regarding our compensation program. And then, we've also added guiding principles. Our compensation program is founded on the following core principles. The program will enable us to attract and retain qualified, talented staff. Compensation consists of all forms of pay, including base pay, the dollar value of all benefits, and other incentives. We are market-driven. Compensation is determined by the relative scope, value, and demand for our positions. Pay policies and practices are applied consistently throughout our organization. We take seriously our commitment to fiscal stewardship. Decisions regarding pay are made with consideration of our labor market and our ability to pay. Our program recognizes internal equity and the relative value and relationship between positions."
Good question.
All right, Lou.
So I'm assuming the history of this is that we didn't have a framework like this before, and maybe all our jobs are not all structured under a framework like that. Where did the draft for this come from? Was this something from another city?
This was developed by the consultant that we've been working with.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
So just, just some feedback on the philosophy and the guiding principles overall. I like that there was verbiage in there that talked about aligned with the level of service. I thought that that was great. I also like the last line that talks about the internal equity. I think that that's, that's important. You talk about being flexible and responsive. Might be good to give an idea of how. I think when people think about compensation programs within the government, they don't always think about flexible and responsive, so if there are ways that, that are sort of outside the box, that might be good to point out. And I would hope that, those were just my comments about the philosophy overall. I have a couple other comments just about, as you're going forward, so I can come back to that.
Couple of things. So I see qualification is mentioned, but there isn't sort of a comment around quality or excellence, something, something to the effect of, we want to have the best employees around here, and I don't know how you, I don't know how exactly you want to say that, but, but something around, around that, beyond qualification. I think qualification is necessary, but it's not sufficient. The other question I have is around metrics. And so, if you say you want to be able to attract and retain these qualified, talented staff, I wonder if there's a statement somewhere in there about, you know, tracking and revising as necessary, or something to that effect. I want to make sure that we know that we're retaining, that we're having strong retention as compared to our peers out there.
Anything else?
I'll throw something out. We talked a couple places about, but communicate openly, often transparency was used as some of that, and internal equity. So I'm not sure exactly how it's handled now, but is that something where it's a fairly open thing to, to other employees? What, what pay grades are to where, and what positions and so forth, so it's very open and everybody knows what's going on?
Right. And, and any, any process we develop to establish and evaluate internal equity would be open.
Okay, thank you.
There's a reference to salmon value statements. Could you provide that?
To what was that now?
It's in the opening, the compensation philosophy opening paragraph. It says, in the second sentence, eventually says, "Ensuring achievement of our goals identified in our city mission, vision, and salmon value statements."
So I can probably comment to the salmon values. They're affectionately named salmon, labeled on our internal values. So if I were to recite them, I'll take a stab at it here. Sustaining trust, acting with integrity, leading with respect, mastering communications, owning your actions, and staying engaged. We kind of cheated on the N.
Very good to be able to recite those.
Yeah, no, I'm really impressed, I'm impressed. Those, those statements also identify competence, innovation, so some of the statements that we've made here are included in those value statements.
Yeah, I don't want to create too big of a document, it's not that large, but including the mission, vision, and salmon value statements in this would have, would have been helpful. I mean, I could, I went out and found some of them, but I didn't find that.
Okay.
And one other, so in the second paragraph, it says, "Pay decisions are made consistently and with sensitivity to the compensation practices of the private, public and private organizations." So pay decisions are made consistently. Is that another way of saying, you know, equal pay for equal work? Or what, what, I'm looking, is that implied somewhere else, or is that how you're saying that?
So what that means is we'll be looking at policies and practices and ensuring that those policies and practices are clear and that they're consistently applied across the organization. So consistently with adopted policies and practices?
Yeah, okay, so, okay, so I just wondered if we wanted to be more explicit to make sure that, well, you know, that, that idea of equal pay for equal work. And I don't know, maybe I'm dating myself or what have you, but I think that idea of making sure that regardless of gender, or that you get, you know, you get equal pay for equal work. And I didn't, I didn't see that in here, and I don't, you know, if that's the intent, I don't know if it can or should be more explicit.
Yeah, we, we will consider that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
I'll just come in, I think the last, second to last bullet point about talking about fiscal stewardship and decisions to pay are considered labor market and the ability to pay, so trying to balance that out. Like you say, we can always get the best employee, depending upon how much you want to pay that person, right? So we have to balance that out of having, you know, fair, fair price for a market, for pay, for what they're doing.
Right, yes. Mariah?
Yeah, right along to that point, I think we, you have the word competitive, and usually describing what that, what that word means is usually left a little more vague, but I would assume that with consultants, you're talking a little bit about strategy and, and what to focus on there. When was the last time that this was done?
Or the first?
We, we think 20 years ago.
20, 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Before the E.
Okay. Before the E in Old Town.
Well, okay, I wasn't expecting that. So, did you want to...
So we provided it, Emily Moon, Deputy City Administrator, we provided an overview of this issue, a classification compensation study, when we made the pitch during the budget development. And I think in that document, while I don't have it memorized, we said, "The last comprehensive organization-wide, full-depth, breadth study was done nearly 20 years ago." However, it's important to note that we do compensation, classification, evaluation every time we enter into, to some degree, into negotiations with our bargaining units or on a position-by-position or a classification-by-classification basis when the need arises, when we know, sense that the market has changed, and we feel compelled to then look at a set of positions or individual positions to make those market tests. So we certainly have done pieces and sections of our organization over the last 20 years, but every position across the organization, we haven't done a full study of every position for nearly 20 years.
Thank you. So I, one of my comments would be that it would be interesting to, while you go through the process, to find out if there are some sort of best practices out there or, or types of things that you could deal with. If there are, you know, certainly in the private sector, there are all sorts of great surveys that are going to be focused in on, on certain positions and participating in those surveys, but maybe that's every two years. It might be a way to, to break it apart a little bit, so maybe you're focusing on one group at this time and another group at another time. So hopefully, as you're working with the consultants and that kind of thing, there would be maybe a way to, to make it not so hard. And it's such a, it's a very, very important project to work on, and it's a big undertaking.
One of, one of our considerations, we'll be coming up with guidelines for the study, and one of those considerations is how often we do the maintenance, and so we will be thinking about the schedule for that.
Thank you.
Else? Let's move on to the next question. What is your perspective of our current compensation program?
I don't think we know anything about it. Would be, I think, our starting point. I saw that question, and I thought, oh, I didn't even do any homework. I don't know, don't know much about it. Need education, that's good way of saying it.
Yeah, I know it was, you know, teeny, tiny sliver of unhelpful information was blasted in the press last year, but that's about all I know.
That's what I know.
Metrics, specifically, how do our workers in comparable positions compare to other cities on the east side? What's our, how employee retention, how does it compare to other comparable cities? What else? Average years of experience versus, you know, compared to our peers? That, that sort of information, I think, would, would help us a lot.
Okay.
Mariah? You have a question, Mariah?
I'm thinking.
Yes, this is going to be a silly question. What do you mean by compensation program? Could you clarify that for me?
So we need the full, how we compensate. So that would be our base salaries, all of our, anything that has a financial impact to it that, that contributes to the compensation for employees, including our benefits program.
So it's way beyond, so, you know, every budget has a, has a position, authorized positions in the pay scales, and those are salary-based. And this, the program is beyond, it's the full compensation picture with, with the costing of the benefits and everything.
That's right.
So that's the difference.
Right, we're looking at what we call total cost of compensation. So we will be looking at, at everything that might have some kind of financial impact.
Okay, thank you.
Will that be part of this study? Yes. Mariah?
So I think when you ask the, our perspective, so what we know about the current compensation program, I mean, just in my very limited knowledge of, of the compensation program, I would say it seems to be, to be competitive and, and to be similar to what a lot of, I guess, east side cities in Seattle are offering in terms of compensation. That's just very limited view and just a snapshot. And to, to the point of sort of the overall compensation and benefit program, I just, a comment that that, in terms of recruiting and that kind of thing, I think that's a great thing to put together because being able to see the full compensation number in front of you with the benefits, because benefits are so, they're very robust in government, and, and so that's great to be able to see that snapshot for recruiting and then reminding employees, you know, year by year.
I want to tread lightly because I want to recognize that the private sector is very different than the public sector. Having said that, I would be interested to know how much salary is a function of performance, how that looks for us versus comparable cities. Are there cities that do more or less variable compensation based on performance? And again, I realize it's very, very different in the public sector than it is in the private sector.
Appreciate that.
And then the only thing I know from previous discussions of our union negotiations, and we have that whole thing that is almost its own entity, and then we have salaried employees, and I assume we have hourly as well. So that's -- and seasonal, I'm sure, as well. So how that all works and so forth, I mean, let me say education, we don't know, but that's a little bit. Some of those benefits I was aware, we had a discussion, Bob, and you could meet in one time on all these things that I didn't. Whoa, really? Okay. So a little bit, there's probably a whole lot more I don't know.
Yeah.
So it's going to be part of this question and the next question. I guess under our current compensation program, I'd like to understand what the value of the unfunded liabilities is in terms of banks that accrue and all of that. And then I'll save the second part for the third question.
Okay. Are we ready for the third question, then? Sounds like yes.
Third question. What goals do you want to achieve with the compensation program that will be implemented as a result of this study?
Second part of my question.
Go ahead.
So after there's some sort of quantification to the unfunded liabilities, one thing I would be looking for in this compensation program would be some, what are the strategies to manage those going forward? And that might be that the current -- a current program or benefit or something that we offer now might be different, or it might not. I don't know. So just how to manage those unfunded liabilities going forward, whether or not that means changes to programs or not.
Mariah? I'm going to bring up again, hopefully, that as you're going through this very large process, that you uncover some best practices that would help be able to -- I'm trying to think of -- be able to narrow down and just allow the city to maybe work on survey work or that kind of thing more often and not have it be such a large process to go through. So.
Anything else?
Right. Okay. Great. So next steps. We're going to be summarizing what we've discussed tonight. We're going to be taking that back to the SLT, having further discussion with them. The result of those discussions will be a finalized policy draft statement, along with some guiding principles for the study, the guiding principles, and then some guidelines for the study itself. Those will be brought back to you the first week in June with a resolution for your approval and for further discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
I think so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I only have, I guess, one reminder before we adjourn, unless anybody else has anything good of the order, for good of the order, and that is that we have -- the next committee work session is -- it doesn't give you much time to prepare, but it's Wednesday, and it starts at 5:30, not our usual 6:30, as a reminder. And so we will see you all here Wednesday at 5:30. Anything else for good of the order?
Forty-four hours from now.
Amazing.
Just stay here.
All right. We are adjourned.